Like the call, the Wayne County Commission Committee of the Hold to Order. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Each member is acknowledging that they are attending the meeting via Zoom and that they are located in Wayne County, Michigan, unless otherwise stated when I call your name. Commissioner Anderson has requested an excuse. Commissioner Basham. Commissioner Basham. Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Dog.
Here.
Commissioner Hattis.
Present.
Commissioner Colleen.
Here.
Commissioner Kenlock.
Present.
Commissioner Kneecic. Commissioner Kneecic. Commissioner Morecki.
Here.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
Commissioner Varga.
Here.
Vice Chair Protim Badun.
Here.
Vice Chair Palomero.
Here.
Chair Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Basham has also requested an excuse. Commissioner Kneecic. You have a quorum present.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Approval of the minutes from the September thirty of twenty twenty-one meeting.
Their motion, thank you, there's a board. Moved and supported to approve the minutes from the September thirtieth meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Anyone wish abstain?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Chair's remarks.
None today, except for we are going to have a pretty nothing meeting, so great informative meeting, so we will jump right into it. Next item.
Unfinished business, there is none listed. We are moving to item E one, a presentation by Dr. Curtis Ivory on the program offerings at Wayne County Community College District.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to have with us this morning someone who is no stranger to any of us doing an excellent job with our Wayne County Community College District, Dr. Curtis Ivory. But before we bring him on, I'd like to ask Ms. Yvette Miguelroy Anderson, who's the Director of Government Relations for the college, to please come on first and give a few opening remarks. Yvette, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bell. I really appreciate that. Good morning, Wayne County Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just, I just wanted to say, have a little intro about our chancellor, and I know he's no stranger to most of you. Dr. Ivory is an educator, author, mentor, change agent, and he's a thought leader. His body of work is a flame that engulfs, encourages, and inspires us all in the Wayne County Community College District family as well as in the region. One of my favorite attributes about Dr. Ivory is his unwavering commitment as a voice for educational equity and opportunity and access. We ask that you put your virtual hands together for my mentor, diverse champion award recipient, our chancellor, Dr. Curtis L. Ivory.
Thank you. Dr. Ivory, so glad to see you and have you here with us this morning. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity. I recognize so many of you, and so many of you've been pioneers and you've been out there, out front. You've always been so open and in your willingness to help me and the college move forward. You recognize, you know, while I, while I know, you know, most of you, I certainly can speak to what Martha and Irma, you know, have been about for so many years. It's, you know, may, may have more to do with how long they've been around than anything, but, but as well as how long I've been around, but they've been so, so supportive and a vanguard for, for, you know, good stuff for the college, so committed to the students and where we wouldn't be where we are now, were not for people like those two. And, and others of you continue to be champions for the college. Commissioner Hattis is my new champion. He's, he works hard and he's so supportive of me at every level, particularly at the, on the airport board, but in other ways as well. About the college. If, if the college is so important to, I, I had this wonderful experience on, 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 on Saturday, had a chance to see these students who, when I had a chance to look at them, they had this bright cheerful look in their eyes. They were so proud of that facility and it, it was just hard. It was, it was a powerful thing for me to see students so proud of something that belonged to them. And it's certainly far from what it was like when they had a facility on Joy Road and, and Joy Road and here at Greenfield. And that was not, you know, the best facility in the world. Think it is now. It's been torn down and so now the students can embrace this new wonderful facility, but they were so proud of that facility on Saturday and it, it was heartwarming for all of us and those of us who associated with the college. In terms of where we are, you know, we have over a hundred and twenty different career programs. We have the social degree, social appliance degree, and again, we have the, the career programs. And I could name those, I could go on and name those forever. And some of the programs are tremendously in play now and, and very, very active. But I think the, that the issue for us early on is about right now, it's about sustainability. It's about re-engaging. How do we bring our students back? We, we, we can't forget that our students are still struggling to, to make it work. I mean, they, they, they have barriers that they're trying to overcome. Now, we, community colleges, the colleges all over the country are struggling in terms of re-engaging students, looking at the modalities for delivering instruction. Are you going to do it online or are you going to bring students back and have them participate in person? I was, let me give you a sense of the challenge right now. I just, I got a call this morning and we may have to close one of our campuses today simply because of the, we've had a surge of, of the virus at one of our locations and so most of our administrators are having to be out this morning. That's a pattern that we're seeing over and over and over now. And I suspect we're going to see that for a while. So we have to be in a position to be responsive and kind of turn on a dime when necessary because as soon as we think that we're going to be okay, we can bring students back, we can re-engage students, suddenly we have an issue where students are, or we have an infection and, and it suddenly becomes a major issue for us. So we have to shut down and that's probably going to happen for a while. And I don't know, you know, how we get beyond that. But even when we do get beyond it, what we're struggling with now, what I, and there's a lot of issues related to emotional and mental health. Our students who are coming back, I, I happened to be on an elevator with one of our young students, a young lady's a few days ago, and, and she explained to me that she was only able to work two days. She has a full-time job, but she's only able to work two days a week and asked why? And she said, because she has to be home with her children two days a week because she cannot afford daycare. And when she, when she shared with me the cost of daycare, I almost fell out of, I almost, I could not believe the cost. And I don't know how many of us recognize that cost is absolutely overwhelming. So in terms of barriers for our students, we, they continue to struggle with daycare issues. They continue to struggle with transportation issues. They continue to struggle with food inequity, kinds of issues, and underemployment in many ways. So those issues are ongoing. So sometimes it's difficult to talk about the programs. Yes, we can talk about the programs. Yes, we can talk about delivery, but we shall not and cannot forget that there are barriers that our students are, are, can, are trying to overcome. And, and, and as a unique trap, demographics, our student population, I would say more unique in most, our students or, or, or students who are, are coming out of, you know, this kind of concentrated poverty experience. And so when they come to us, they do have issues that we have to try to address. And we're doing that and we'll continue to do that. One of the things I think that, that in terms of programs that I like a lot now, probably more than, more, more so than ever, and that's the University Center Program that, that we have in place. That's on eight mile, give me the address, Yvette, that's what is in Harper, what most of you probably know where it is, the University Center. And that's a very important program because what we're able to allow people to pursue their baccalaureate degree in partnership with several universities. So if you've completed your, your, your social degree, then you have the opportunity to participate in, in the, the four-year degree programs from Ferris State University, Michigan State, University of Michigan, Wals, Wals, there's several other institutions that I'm, I'm, I'm missing at the moment, but that we, that's available for, for anyone wanting to, to pursue the baccalaureate degree. So that's, that's one that's really taken off course and I really would encourage you to, to explore and share with your constituencies. That's a very important program. On the career side, the construction trades program, I mean, the, well, the construction trade program side as well, but more that the program that's really, really hot now is transportation and truck driving, and that wouldn't surprise you because I mean, that's all over the news and companies can't hire enough, can't find enough people able to, to deal with that, 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 that supply need in that particular area. So we're not having any problem replacing our, our truck driving students. But in terms of the programs, we have many. In terms of how we're doing, we're doing well, trying to re-engage, students are coming back. I, I, I think we're going to be able to accommodate our students. I think we're going to have the capacity. The budget is, 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 I would say, okay, nothing to brag about, you know, when you lose property taxes like we have in, in property taxes, that's how we survive as an institution. But we, you know, that's been a challenge for Wayne County for a while now in general. So that's an issue. We did receive some, some, some carriage money to, to supplement our budget, obviously, but that's one-time funded and we don't, we don't expect to receive anymore. I mean, if the, if the, if the, the infrastructure bill would help us with some of the current programs. Now, the, the, the bill that we need to have passed would be the Build Back Better Bill because in that bill, they're embedded some funds for the universities. And so we're, we're hoping that, that, that bill is passed and that certainly would help us. We'll go a long ways in terms of being able to add more programs, certainly help address some of the barriers for our students like daycare and transportation, counseling, and I think counseling, emotional, for emotional health issues ought to be something that we pay attention to. But I, I, I hope that you, you're proud of what we do and we work hard at trying to give you something that you can be proud of. We know that, that the institutions are about, they, they, this institution defines us. I mean, it's about our culture, it's about what students expect and what students want. So they want to come in and, and experience clean facilities. They want classrooms that are nice and clean. I mean, it's, it's about learning. So if we can offer that, the students tend to do very well. If we give them an environment they can be proud of. So I don't want to, I'm going to give you some time to, to, let me respond to any questions you might have. There's someone in the background. Was that someone speaking of that?
I think that was a little background noise.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I did put the link to the University Center in the chat and our University Center is located on Vernonia Road in Harper Woods.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Ivory. I see a hand. Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Thank, thank you, Doc. Thank you for being here and thank you for the wonderful job that you're doing over there with Wayne County Community College. You know what I hear from people, and I know that the nursing or the healthcare industry, they're in dire straits for additional employees. The problem is that it takes training. They got to be trained. Now, I know that you offer training over at Wayne County Community College in the healthcare field. But the, but another problem is that they can't quit their jobs to do the training. Do you know of any programs that were, that they could get some kind of a stipend or something while they're going to school, especially in the nursing area?
Irma, Commissioner Clark, you're so on target. Often people don't realize it's easy sometimes to provide the, the, the training and put the programs out there, but the stipends are so important because the stipends represent an opportunity for those students who are training to access transportation. It, it helps to deal with those food inequities because, believe it or not, some of the, some of the students will come without a lunch, without money to, 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 to sustain themselves doing, you know, an eight-hour period while they're on an assignment. So the, the stipends are really important and the, the, the partnership, for example, the one we've had with the Sheriff's Department has been very, very productive in, in that, in that context. But no, I'm, I'm not aware. I think that, that's just an issue that, I mean, in all the schools, and this is something I'm hearing at the national level, what, that, that we, that all of us are talking about is one thing to talk about training, but it's another thing to talk about that transition from, 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 from school to work, I mean, the transition there, where you need that, that some type of stipend available for students so they can make that transition to the workplace.
Now, so you, you don't think that we could use the American Rescue money for that purpose? Is, is, is that not allowable?
No, I don't think that would be allowable. You know, I think that, that there, I would say probably some of the more, some of the legislatures probably represented, probably wrote that part out of the bill. But no, that's not something we're able to do.
So also, I know that the state did, they, they did a, they have a program where students can go to school free, certain students, especially those that were in those, in the, in the, in the areas, worked in the areas where it was a kind of a hazard that they are allowed. Is that program still in effect?
I think, I think you're referring to the Connect Michigan Program. Yvette, is that the one we're talking about? That were limited to
Yes.
a very small percentage of students, for example. I believe that we had about three hundred students that qualified and we had the largest number of students to qualify for, of, of any school in the state. So if we only had three hundreds, that means that about a thousand, a thousand, millions of students would have probably qualified. So it was a very few students that qualified. The, 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 the whole notion of free sometimes just so overstated because it's very, very rarely, rarely happens where students are able to go to school. If, if the, the pilgrim is probably the best hope for anything that, that looks like free, I mean, look like something that might be free, that's the pilgrim. But there's no, I, I, it's just, I mean, I would always encourage you when someone say that there's a, an opportunity to free, please unpack that statement. And because often we discover that it's really not.
Okay, so I'm going to wind up by saying that, that program that you had with the Sheriff's Department to provide training, especially like in truck driving and those areas, I think that is a marvelous program. And I truly hope that that one will continue. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so, so much. I appreciate you and that program will be successful and it has been today.
Thank you, Dr. Ivory. Next we have Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Dr. Ivy, Ivory and yes, and Yvette, who is one of my constituents. Thank you so much for attending today and providing the information. Thank you for all the work that you do. If you recall, we met early on when I first became Commissioner to discuss the War on Trash initiative that I have
I remember, I remember, yes.
in Northwest Detroit, as well as helping citizens, re-entry citizens. And I think Commissioner Clark Coleman just brought up part of that initiative where you have the truck driving. And I just wanted to see how that program is going in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department and just kind of get an update on where, where you are on that.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, Commissioner, but I, I know that's a very successful program, but I can get some, some, some data for you and get it back to you, to metrics. But we're doing, that's one of our hot programs and one of the programs that people seek out and probably one of our most discussed programs. So let me, if you, if I might, I can get some information back to you and I get it to Yvette and she could show that.
That'll be great because I, I do know that, you know, from what I hear, it, it's a successful program, but I just wanted to, yes, to commend you on that and thank you for the hard work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to having you over here for coffee.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hattis.
Thank you. Dr. Ivory, it was an honor to work with you and as my colleague Clark Coleman mentioned about the people who really can't afford to quit the job and try to be trained for another career. There's some program with the state, with the Michigan workforce, is the Wayne County Community College have any connection with the workforce, Michigan workforce to bring people to you for a training and then to offer them a job from the provider, the job provider who communicate with Michigan workforce and tell them what they need, the truck driver, nurses, the IT, whatever they need. Is there any communication between the Wayne County Community College and the Michigan workforce?
Almost on a daily basis, we're having a lot of interface and exchange with the state relative to workforce opportunities in terms of resources, but these are coming to us in, and in the form of grants. So grants that we apply for and which we are applying. In some cases, we've been successful, others we have not, but it's competitive and it's okay. You know, we want to be competed, to be competitive. The, 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 in terms of placement, the only, the state can turn these opportunities over to the private, to the private sector. I think most of the colleges presidents would say to you that, what they would say is that we don't always be successful working with the corporate, with, 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 with the private sector and getting to this place. And, and we don't know why we don't do, we, we're encouraging the, the corporate world to work out, to work with us and, and reach out early, early on to help students be placed into certain jobs. But we, 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 we need to do a better job, I think, on both ends. One thing we're doing extremely well and then someone alluded to it and that's, that's healthcare. We do well there, particularly in our nursing program. We have a really, really solid nursing program. We, 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 we have, we've been accredited in, in every area at the highest possible level. And, and the hospitals and other medical facilities are reaching out to our students now more than ever. And even, but with that, there's still a shortfall in terms of getting nurses in, in the hospitals. There's a real, really, really shortfall now. But, but Commissioner Hattis, it is the, 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 you know, how we, that, that, that step into the private, that step into the corporate world, working with the corporations. Somehow we all as a colleges, we need to, we need to determine how we could do a better job there because we're not getting students placed as effectively as we would like to.
You know, Wayne County Community College and, and two districts of Michigan workforce, Detroit District and District Ten. And I really, with, with your approval, I like to have both district director meet with you because I think we serve in the same purpose. But I think your guidance because of you, the educator, that could speed up the process and enhance the situation for those people. As Commissioner Clark Coleman mentioned, they can afford to quit a job because there's certain funding and the state to pay for their education wherever through community college or sometime they pay direct to the job provider. They give them the money to train those people on the job and the same time they making money. So I, I love to see arranged meeting between you and the two director of Michigan Workforce of Detroit and District Ten and maybe with your guidance, we could have a little more clear path for those who need those jobs or need to be trained and to see, to put pressure on the state to put more funding to the area where we don't have. So I, I love to do that after probably I'll communicate with you next week and arrange meeting between you and the two CEO.
Be happy, be happy to do so, sir. Be happy to do so.
Thank you. I know your leadership in Wayne County. It's crystal clear. We appreciate you and many thousands of the students who went from the need to success. And we appreciate that. We wish you luck to continue that journey to fix our future generation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning again, Dr. Ivy.
Good morning, Martha.
And Yvette. Good to see you both this morning. I just want to thank you for all that you have done down through the years here. You know, we lost our college in Highland Park. We had the best nursing program in the country and you have taken over and done such a great job with your nursing program, the construction trades, the truck driving, all of these programs that we have needed all over the, the years. So I, I just want to just say thank you for your hard work that you have done since you have been the president of this college. Because I go back a while. I know when it wasn't so good. So, so I just want to continue to congratulate you and ask you if there's anything that you think that we can do. And I have, I have been trying to reach out to the, the congresspeople, letting them know
letting them know how bad we need this bill back program, you know? And so I am just hoping and praying that we can get that, because I know that we need it. Uh, uh, every time I hear women speak about the daycare, that they can't, you know, work because, you know, of, of the daycare programs, it is just so expensive and things continue to go up and up and up. And uh, so uh, just let us know what we can do individually and collectively, because we have got to help you keep on going. You have done such a yeoman job and I can't wait to get down and see the college now.
We want you to. We're excited about having you there.
Yes, indeed. So thank you again.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kenlock.
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank you for all the work that you do. Uh, look, you are a very important part of young people and particularly on the people, uh, young people who cannot afford uh, college, uh, university uh, because of costs and other issues. Um, you have been a bridge to uh, financial sustainability and identifying careers and, and, and helping people to um, path out or chart out their, their futures. This is a question that um, I have for you. They have been, there's a lot of conversation going on about community colleges offering limited um, bachelor degrees. Um, and I just want to know uh, where and how are, are you and the community college participating in those discussions? Um, is offering uh, limited um, bachelor degrees and various uh, limited uh, programs? It, are you part of those discussions?
Uh, yes, we are and, and have been. I think this has been going on about five years. Now, and uh, I, I've been, I've been an advocate probably more now than I was early on. I, I think that uh, it, we, it's, we certainly have a place and a role uh, if we're going to increase the number of, of, of grease seeking or, or those who want to uh, um, um, a college degree, then we certainly, we certainly have an important role to play there. Uh, I think that, I would say that we probably should never do more than we can put on the run and do it effectively. So from my perspective, if we could do one or two bachelor degrees, I would be more than happy. Um, probably not more than that. And uh, but I, I do think that we made some progress and we're gonna get there. We have a lot of what's called reverse, uh, in our, in our environment and our student population, we have what's called reverse transfers. Students who, who will pursue an advanced degree, whether it's even in medicine or even we have attorneys, we have people who, engineers who get, you know, those, those, those really um, tough degrees, but they decide at some point to come back to the community college and, and complete a trade, uh, which is, which makes sense, because some of those get traded off a lot of money. But, but uh, I know, Commissioner, I think that the, that the back, bachelor degree is something I support and uh, will continue to support. And I appreciate your, 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 your being aware of, of that conversation at the state level.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Ivory. Um, as a stated, you have wonderful programs. Um, there's even a program for those that you that don't know, um, at Cass Tech High School where children can get their um, associate's degree while they're getting their high school diploma, which is a wonderful program. My nephew was in that program at Cass. So I just thank you for all the great programs that you have. And all that I would ask, if you could give us maybe a one or two cheater on your different programs that we can share with our um, constituents, maybe we'll do newsletters, either electronically or um, uh, papers. So it'd be great to have that. We encourage people to please attend the college, get the training, the skills that they need to put them on a path to a wonderful career. I thank you again for your time and it's been too long, but uh, we won't go this long again without having you come speak to us.
Thank you. I've enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you both. Have a wonderful day. We love you, Dr. Ivory.
We love, we love you too. Thank you so much.
More and more, I tell you.
Thank you so much. You have, you have a wonderful day.
You as well. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Um, Madam Clark, next item, please.
We're moving to item number two on the agenda, discussion on American Rescue Plan Act appropriations.
Okay, very good. Um, is Mr. Khalil?
Yes.
Available? There he is. Okay, fantastic. Uh, I am going to uh, turn the floor over to you, but uh, this is um, and he'll go into further detail, but the plan to appropriate the funds from the American Rescue Plan. Um, many of the department heads will come speak to even the issues. You're gonna share your screen, correct Khalil? What do you want to share? Are you gonna share it? All right. So what we're gonna do is have questions after um, each director speaks. And then because we can keep those questions fresh and um, I will turn it over to Khalil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, excellent. I got the presentation up. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the rest of the body for giving us this opportunity to come before you today. Uh, I want to thank you for your patience with us. We have been working very diligently on trying to present you all with the best plan possible. You know, as you all know, Wayne County received three hundred and thirty-nine million dollars uh, from the American Rescue Plan. And the purpose of the legislation and the funding is to try to combat the negative impacts of, of COVID and, and the pandemic. You know, obviously, a lot of the things that have been impacted by the pandemic, you know, a lot of those issues existed before COVID. But I think one thing the pandemic did was shed a huge magnifying light on a lot of the historical issues that has always really existed and maybe even been exacerbated by the pandemic. And so, you know, we have been on a mission to try to hear from anybody and everybody, um, you know, from commissioners especially, about what they think we ought to be spending uh, these funds on. I will say we have certainly more problems than we have resources. Uh, and, and so we're doing the best that we can uh, to provide you all with a plan. Um, I think through this process and especially through our outreach, you know, we've learned a lot of different things. Virus is still here. It's changing. You know, the needs uh, to combat the virus are ever so changing. Federal legislation is, is changing uh, on the American Rescue Plan as well as new federal resources that are out there. Uh, the state funding and their appropriation and their resources is ever changing. Uh, and because of that, we're, you know, we're gonna present a plan to you all that we think is structural, is transparent, attacks historical issues, maybe will never address all the issues. Um, but is nimble at the same time, nimble to take advantages of the opportunities that may come out there and nimble to address the needs that are always, always changing. So today you're gonna see a presentation. Uh, we'll give you a little bit of a roadmap of, you know, where we started and how we've got here. We'll talk to you about the outreach and, and all the folks that we have spoken to. We'll talk to you a little bit about the feedback uh, that we have received. We'll obviously talk about the legislation and the rules around it. Um, you know, some of the questions and some of the ways we uh, you know, judge some of the initiatives that have been presented to us. We'll talk a little bit about the leverage opportunities that are out there. We're always looking to maximize, you know, every penny that we can. And then ultimately, we'll present to you about six categories of things that we are proposing that we'll spend money on. Uh, and these categories are broad in nature, but their hope is that they attack some of the impacts of COVID-19. And after that, we will try to answer any questions that you have. I guarantee you, you know, throughout this process, uh, we have, you know, missed something. Uh, and I guarantee you that the door is not closed for all kinds of conversation. But our hope is, is that if we can, you know, work together, not just with the county commission, but also with our local municipalities, with the state of Michigan, with philanthropy. Uh, even though we, you know, we'll always have problems and we'll always have things to address, uh, we're hoping to make, you know, significant progress on a lot of the issues that were exacerbated by the pandemic and it plagued us sort of historically. So with that, Madam Chair, if I'm, if I'm gonna go ahead and go on to the next slide, we'll go through the presentation. You'll hear from a lot of directors and then hopefully we'll answer questions at the end. This is a little bit of a roadmap of the journey that we have come through over the last year and a half plus. Uh, you know, uh, pandemic started in March of twenty twenty and March twenty-seventh of twenty twenty, the CARES Act was signed into law. Now, I will say, if you see this map, you can see it's been a tumultuous, you know, year and a half. And I just want to say before we start, I want to thank, you know, all the county employees uh, that have gone through this sort of uh, journey with us and, and all the commissioners. It's, it's, it's been a, a interesting time to work in government, you know? I think there's a lot of relief that needs to get out there. There's a lot of resources that people need. And I think sometimes people don't always, you know, appreciate that county employees are going through the pandemic like anybody else. Um, and they're working as hard as they can with the resources that we have to provide to the people who need it the most. So I just want to say thank you to all the directors, all the people that work in the departments, the county commission, the staff and everybody else that, that's really tried to get through this with us together. Uh, when the pandemic hit, the one thing our administration was very focused on is increasing communication. I think, Madam Chair, you, you're uh, present during a Tuesday uh, call every other Tuesday with countywide elected officials. Some of you uh, join us uh, on our other bi-weekly uh, call with every mayor and supervisor and the folks uh, from Congress. And then obviously, you know, in May of twenty twenty, we started a, a roundtable uh, where we hosted people from, you know, the legislative staffs, people from uh, mayors and supervisors, nonprofits, folks in the business community. Uh, and that has been going strong and I've been really, very, very proud of, of, of that board because, you know, we never have less than fifty people attend. When we have guest speakers, we'll oftentimes have a hundred people attend. A lot of commissioners have been very dedicated and showing up to, you know, that Friday meeting religiously and, and can't thank you enough for that, you know, participation. And the idea was, we want to hear from everybody. We want to hear the issues. We want ideas. And we want to increase the level of communication for the relief that's out there. We have used those forums to talk about, you know, what we were gonna spend the CARES Act dollars on and we spent a lot of money on things like testing, PPE, vaccines and a significant amount of work that the health department did. But we also had three programs that we worked on last year. You know, in June of twenty twenty, seventy million dollars, we started to disperse for a small business relief program. In November, nonprofit grant in the amount of four million dollars. In December, a restaurant worker program, the amount of six million dollars were distributed. And the thing that I think we're very, very proud about those programs is that they were very targeted to the people most in need. Significant amount of minorities received uh, those awards. Significant amount of, you know, uh, women uh, in the workforce and small business owners received those awards. And we really, really targeted to the areas we thought were shut out by a lot of others, you know, federal programs. So we're really very proud of how it worked out. Of course, in December of twenty seven, the Consolidated Appropriation Act was signed into law. That gave us, you know, more time to spend our CARES Act dollars. And throughout the new year, we got a new administration, uh, which in March of, of uh, eleventh of twenty twenty-one, signed the American Rescue Plan Act, which appropriated approximately three hundred and thirty-nine million dollars to Wayne County. We also received thirty-two million dollars of emergency rental assistance dollars. Uh, we received half of that money in May of thirteen. Of course, guidance didn't come out till later on. Um, and we received half of the American Rescue Plan dollars, approximately a hundred and seventy million. Uh, May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one, again, guidance for that, um, you know, is actually still going on and I'll talk a little bit about that. Later on, May of, of that year, we received a NACO award for how much, for one of the programs that we administered in the CARES Act, the uh, restaurant worker program. Madam Chairwoman, uh, you know, I have no doubt that your presence on that board is always uh, keeping Wayne County in the spotlight. Uh, program did phenomenal things and, and uh, really, you know, very proud of our team for how it was administered. Uh, in August, we launched, you know, in addition to all the other, you know, Zoom, Zoom meetings we have, we launched a workforce development advisory board. Um, you know, as the pandemic has gone on, we've seen, and I think some of the commissioners, like I heard Commissioner Clark Coleman and other commissioners talk about the, the workforce needs. So we, we launched uh, uh, an advisory board for workforce development. Madam Chairwoman, thank you for being the representative on that board for the county commission. Um, and then in August of thirteen, you know, we have been working diligently with our local communities to talk about projects in which we can work together on. Uh, every community in Wayne County received American Rescue Plan dollars. Not every community has the, you know, wherewithal or the consultants or the ability or the experience that the county had with the CARES dollars the year before. And so we've been working diligently to help from a technical space as well as uh, maybe, you know, teaming up from a funding space to do transformational things. And we started to receive projects from local communities in August. Uh, in September, uh, we submitted a interim report uh, to Treasury, the Department of Treasury. Only thing on that report was uh, money that we plan to allocate for pandemic pay, which I know is something that many commissioners asked of us. And I know something that, you know, Alan is currently working on with many uh, different unions. Um, in September uh, of twenty-one, we went to the Mackinac Policy Conference and I know it was well attended. Uh, and I know several commissioners were there to help us announce um, the program for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We launched that program in September and, you know, here we are today to kind of talk to you all about all the cumulative work and outreach that we have done. Can you go to the next slide, please? Little bit about the legislation, you know, on the left-hand side there, let's talk about some of the eligible uses of this legislation. Uh, you know, the money can be used to help support the public health response, respond to the negative impacts of COVID. Legislation specifically calls out the ability to use the money for water, sewer and broadband infrastructure investments, premium pay for essential workers, revenue loss, there's a lot of rules around revenue loss, uh, and then services to disproportionately impacted communities. Across the top line there, there's some important deadlines and timelines that I think you should know. One, uh, what we spend money on, the, the cost for those things must have been incurred on or after March third of twenty twenty-one. What, what that means is, you know, we, we just can't spend money on something that we are already spending money on. So we couldn't take this money and allocate it to, say, the jail that we've already spent money on. Um, there are some exceptions to this rule, most notably revenue loss is probably the largest exception. The funds must be obligated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four and we have until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six to spend the funds. Again, they'll be continuing reporter, uh, reporting requirements with Treasury. Guidance for how we spend these funds uh, has come out periodically, you know, throughout the year. Um, Treasury has a strong encouragement of evidence-based programming. And, and the one thing I, I think everybody should pay attention to is there's still another, the guidance has come out twice uh, this year already, but there's still another set of guidance to come out before the year ends. And they're calling this the interim final rule. Uh, and so, you know, periodically what happens is municipalities get a chance to ask the Department of Treasury a lot of questions and they accumulate those questions and they get a chance to put out some, some guidance on that. And so more guidance is to come. Um, also, there's always new legislation being introduced. Uh, most recently, the Senate passed a bill that um, asked that ten million dollars of these funds be used for road funding as a flexible means of dollars. It's not additional dollars, but more flexibility around the fund. So we're still sifting through some of the legislation here. Next slide, please. Little bit of the outreach efforts that we have taken on. Um, you know, we have been on a mission to talk to anybody and everybody about this. You can see we've had a lot of stakeholder meetings, a few with the uh, public commission hearings, forty-three municipalities, county departments. You know, our Friday roundtables, like I mentioned before, are very well-attended. Uh, and we, you know, we never have less than fifty people at those things. Sometimes we all have a hundred. We have spoken to our community colleges, including Dr. Ivory. Um, we've spoken to Wayne Risa a few times. Uh, we've had meetings where we've hosted with the business community, the nonprofit and philanthropic community to see if there's any leverage opportunities there. Workforce Development Advisory Board has met seventeen times. In total, we have had, you know, over a hundred meetings, as you can see, all of which have had multiple people, uh, you know, in some cases fifty or a hundred people in them. And so we've done a significant amount of outreach. I will say something that's not on this page is that we, we've also had the benefit of watching a lot of other municipalities. Our consultants in Guide House have somewhere around seventy or north of seventy, you know, municipalities under contract. You know, we ask them to do a little spying for us from time to time, you know, see what the other municipalities are doing, see what the do's and don'ts are, what's working, you know, what's not working. We've also had the benefit of watching other municipalities locally here, like uh, the mayor of Detroit uh, presented his plan. Uh, and, and he was able to do a survey of over a thousand people in a city and, and we've been able to use those types of materials to think through how we might spend these dollars. There's a lot of things that, that we have learned and a lot of things that, you know, we've gone through, um, you know, through the, the portal that we have set up, local municipalities have submitted projects and we have had nearly three hundred projects submitted to us. And they span over six general categories and we'll talk a little bit about that. Uh, funding for the projects uh, came in in, in total over two-point-five billion dollars so far and we only have three hundred and thirty-nine million dollars to allocate. I, I will say that the two-point-five billion is a conservative number. A lot of municipalities that submitted projects had, um, you didn't have A lot of municipalities that submitted projects had, um, you didn't have all the pricing for all the projects. They had their product submitted and we decided to display a conservative number for you, but it wouldn't shock me. You know, if those things resulted in three billion dollars worth of requests. You know, what we've learned is that locals need more funding. They needed technical support and we learned, you know, just from watching a lot of do's and don'ts, um, that budget discipline is a very, very important thing. We've seen a lot of municipalities use the money internally and expand their internal budgets. And the fear there is in that three years or four years when the money runs out. You know, you'll have to, you know, reduce service, lay off people, uh, you know, a, and basically be left holding a bag or, or, or declare deficits. And, and those are the types of things that I think are very, very important to pay attention to. Uh, and so budget discipline is something that we're, we're very conscious of. To strategically provide support to locals in coordination is very, very encouraged. Uh, you know, you want to avoid bankruptcy and, uh, bureaucracy, I'm sorry, and you want to use restricted funds before unrestricted funds. The reason why that's important is there, there is so many people that need so much help. You know, one-time grant funds are usually used in one-time grant dollars. And there's really not enough general contractors to do all the work, you know, countrywide. And so, you know, teaming up our funds with other funds is a very prudent thing, uh, to look at. Projects that were submitted there are more closely related to COVID, that are transformational, feasible, that promote equity and that have leverage opportunities. Those projects were more closely considered. The conversations for programming is still ongoing and the reason for that, like I said, COVID still evolving, federal funding is still evolving. The possible leverage opportunities with the state are still evolving. And so based on the feedback that we have had, we're going to present to you a very nimble, a very transparent, a structural plan, but one that can account for different programs that others may provide as well as account for the needs that we have sort of ahead of us. Next slide. You know, we had a lot of projects submitted to us and whenever a project was submitted, we asked ourselves these questions and forgive the triangle. It's just a sort of an easy thing for me to remember, but starting from the bottom up, we asked ourselves, does it meet the Treasury requirements? How closely related is it to COVID-19? What are the outcomes that are driven because of a project or initiative? Is it a feasible thing to do? What's the leverage opportunity there? How many outside dollars are coming in? And does this project promote equity and equality? To dive a little deeper into every one of those questions, can you go to the next slide? Starting with equity, we ask ourselves, you know, how many municipalities does this project or initiative impact? Which vulnerable populations, uh, are affected, are positively affected? Is it minorities, disconnected youth, unemployed individuals, returning citizens, veterans, people with disabilities and many more? Would this project help the community that has been, I'm sorry, can you go back one slide? Some, not all communities were impacted the same. So would this project help, uh, uh, a, a community that's been disproportionately impacted by COVID? Uh, and what's been the community feedback? The next slide talks about leverage and, and the idea here is how many outside dollars might be contributed towards the project? Is the local community providing funds? Is the state providing funds? Is there a nonprofit or a, uh, you know, philanthropy? How many, how much of these funds are coming from the outside? How much is the county putting up? Next slide. Is the project feasible? You know, how many years does it take to do the project? Who's the lead organization of the project? Have, do they have the resources or do they have the capacity and have they been successful at doing these types of projects before? Next slide. What are the outcomes of a project? The legislation and the auditing of this is actually very much focused and riddled with providing the Department of Treasury with the type of outcomes from any initiative or any project. And so, you know, is the project transformational for a community or county? Is it self-sustaining? Does it produce revenue? Will it improve the quality of life? How important are the outcomes of a project? Next slide. How closely related is the project or how, how, how much has it been exacerbated by COVID-19? There are projects and then there are projects, you know, there are some projects in the health department that are very closely related to the pandemic. There are road projects that have been impacted by the pandemic. Uh, but we ask ourselves, you know, how closely related is it to the impacts of COVID-19? And then the last piece is, you know, does it meet the Treasury requirements, which again, are still coming out? Can you go to the next slide? Little bit about the leverage opportunity that may be in front of us. The state of Michigan was allocated about six point five billion dollars of the American Rescue Plan. And in Wayne County, we've got one point, almost one point eight million people in a state that has less than ten million people. So I think we have a very, very strong case to tell the state and ask the state that a significant portion of those dollars, you know, should be directed to Wayne County. And so that's a very, you know, important leverage opportunity. City of Detroit got eight hundred and twenty-six million, uh, and so that may be an opportunity to partner up with. Wayne County got three hundred and thirty-nine, as I mentioned before. I think, uh, what's important to note here is that, uh, the communities outside Detroit got two hundred and twenty-two million dollars. Uh, and so, you know, a lot of those communities, um, have been asking for more. They, they have been asking for technical assistance programs. We've been working with them diligently on trying to find leverage opportunities. The community colleges also received some money, uh, about eighty-one point five million dollars between the three colleges that are in Wayne County. And, you know, this isn't the only set of funds that came out there. School districts got money, most notably, uh, DPS, uh, received over a billion dollars of the American Rescue Plan funds. So there are significant opportunities to work with a, a lot of different folks. Next slide, please. So there are a lot of things that, um, we learned and that maybe shed a lot, a really big magnifying glass that, that we want to talk about. You know, when we talk about the American Rescue Plan funds, the intention of the funds is to impact the negative impacts of COVID. There were a lot of negative impacts of COVID and there, a lot of these issues existed before COVID, like I said, but there's certainly things that were highlighted and, and, and magnified. And so we want to use the money to address those issues. Some of the issues, uh, that were magnified. Obviously, the health disparities, uh, in Wayne County were dramatically magnified, particularly amongst certain racial and ethnic minority groups. Wayne County is the most diverse county in the state of Michigan. Um, but our, you know, quality of life ranking is eighty-three out of eighty-three counties in the state. Um, and I will say that during the pandemic, we had the highest infection rate. We had one of the highest death rates, uh, of COVID-19, uh, in, in the state and even amongst the country. And those health disparities, uh, were magnified for sure. And so we want to spend money in that area to help provide greater access to both physical and behavioral health. Economic recovery, uh, you know, certainly before the pandemic, right? Small businesses had a hard time getting resources. We knew that. But what we saw in the pandemic with executive orders and people afraid to go out. You know, we saw that small businesses, under fifty employee businesses, minority and women-owned businesses had a, a harder time during the pandemic. Uh, and we saw that because when the PPP program came out, initially ninety percent of those groups, minority and women-owned businesses were shut out of that program. Even in our own program that, you know, when we aimed at, at, at smaller businesses, under fifty employees, you know, we may have helped five thousand businesses, but we had over fifteen thousand applications. Uh, and today we're experiencing a lot of businesses, storefronts being shut down. So we know we have to help in that area. Infrastructure was certainly a problem before the pandemic. But, you know, construction dramatically slowed down during the pandemic. Uh, either through executive orders or people couldn't get to work for any number of different reasons. We know we had a billion, three billion dollars of work that needed to be done. We also knew we experienced a lot of extreme weather events and we know that the legislation allows us to spend money to help with those things. Public spaces, uh, is something that, you know, has always sort of, uh, been thought about in Wayne County. We're one of the oldest industrial places in the country, right? And maybe public spaces was not always high on our history's radar. But during the pandemic, we saw a thirty percent increase of people using parks and trails. Uh, and so, you know, that's a, a really big space for mental and physical health and, and we got to provide better access there. Uh, workforce development, I'm glad to hear Dr. Ivory and so many commissioners, um, talk about this. Certainly a problem before the pandemic, but, you know, as the pandemic has gone on, you know, we are experiencing an era that has been referred to as the Great Resignation. Uh, you know, um, a lot of people out of work, uh, significant gaps in the labor force, particularly, uh, among women who have been disproportionately impacted throughout the pandemic. Uh, and so, you know, spending money in areas like this and working with the community colleges and others is something that I think is very, very important. And housing, we, you know, we saw housing be an issue, uh, throughout the pandemic, uh, as people were out of work. Um, we saw, you know, both the governor as well as, uh, you know, uh, the federal administrations put moratoriums on evictions and foreclosures. Obviously those things have expired and today in Wayne County, the last we checked, we saw there was about a hundred and three million dollars of unpaid rent. When people have to pay their bills, uh, they usually let housing rehab sort of, uh, you know, take, take a backseat. And so we've seen a lot of those needs increase. And, you know, supply chains are down, the, the cost of materials are high. We've all seen that throughout the pandemic. And so affordable housing was difficult before the pandemic, especially in low-income areas, uh, but even more difficult now. And so, you know, we want to spend money in ways that help hopefully address these issues. Again, won't solve these issues. There are other issues. There's no doubt about that. Uh, but we want to, you know, based on the feedback that we have gotten from everybody, uh, we think this is a sort of structural and, and prudent course to, to take. Next slide, please. And so spending money in those areas and trying to come up with a structural, transparent, but nimble plan. Now, these are the types of things that we've been thinking about. Now, in, in the health area, we're proposing to spend somewhere between sixty and seventy million dollars for grant funding opportunities to provide greater access to physical and behavioral health. You're going to hear a little bit more from Malita Jordan, okay? Uh, in the, in the, in the coming slides, uh, a little bit more about the programming you see down there like the community health assessment and improving health actors and educational and behavioral services. Uh, economic recovery, somewhere between sixty and seventy million dollars for grant funding opportunities to help encourage investment development, jobs, quality of life. Small business technical assistance programs, Main Street and site readiness programs have all been requested by chambers of commerce, local municipalities and, and many others. Sixty to seventy million dollars allocated towards infrastructure. You know, again, the legislation allows us to use waters, sewer and drains, which, you know, you can imagine, I, 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 I I'd have to say of, of all the requests we have, it was probably the bigger ticket items, uh, that were requested. Sustainability, uh, has been a, a large topic of discussion just because the, you can see the weather events that we've been facing and global warming and, and, and those things. And you're going to hear, um, you know, from Beverly Watts and Almika Steele and Patrick Collin about those things. Road infrastructure, uh, you know, again, uh, a need before COVID, but, you know, we had to slow down last year, uh, just because of all the pandemic issues we were facing. Somewhere between fifty and sixty million in public spaces. You're going to hear, uh, Alicia Bradford talk about the needs for parks and trails in public spaces along with her team. So grant funding opportunities for one-time capital, uh, in those areas. You're going to hear from Wafa De Niro about workforce development and the boards, uh, that we've been meeting with and, and, um, you know, programming and, and, and who's on those boards and, you know, the requests that we have received for educational programming, upscaling, workforce development, equity and opportunity. And then housing, you'll hear from Anthony Cartwright, Terry Carroll and some of the, the members of the team here about grant funding opportunities to improve housing circumstances in Wayne County. You all know about the rental assistance program. We do have a housing rehab program in community development that has seen an increase in applications. Uh, and again, you know, affordable housing opportunities and hopefully because of the, the supply chain issues and cost of materials, maybe we can help with those types of opportunities. Now, before we go to the next slide, uh, you're going to hear from a lot of good, passionate, um, you know, directors, talk about these things. It is their job to tell you why they ought to receive as much funding as possible in every one of these areas. Uh, and they've been thinking about this intently and I've been so appreciative and thankful for the passion that they have. There certainly, you know, is not enough money in the world to address all of our issues. In addition to hearing them talk about their programming, you will even see some examples of some of the requests we've received. Some of the examples that, that you all requested, you'll see some examples that are in your districts. Uh, if you see an example on here, that does not guarantee that that project or program is, is, is going to get funding. These are what we call, you know, intended programming. And the whole world has to sort of come together to make a lot of these things right. A lot of these projects require local funding and so we need city council to be on board. Uh, but there's certainly projects that we like, there are projects that we hope, uh, and that are intended to get by. Um, and, uh, the, the directors will speak to you a little bit about some of those things and expectations around those things. So if you can go to the next slide. Before I hand it off to Malita, you're going to see a slide like this before every director speak. And I just want to set the stage for what this means. Uh, again, on the left-hand side there, you see somewhere between sixty and seventy million dollars for the initiatives that Ms. Jordan will describe. To the right of that, you see some numbers, uh, and, and some words. Those numbers are specific portions of the American Rescue Plan legislation that allows us to do these types of activities. And so I just wanted you to know what you were looking at. Can you go to the next slide? Malita, you can take it away.
I'm sorry, before, before we go on, sorry, Ms. Jordan, uh, can you go back two slides, please? Yes, here, thank you. I want to see if there are any questions on commissioners about the framework before we get into each specific area. Were there any questions to Khalil about anything he said so far before we get into each department? Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Clark Coleman, I see your hand. Uh, come off, there you go.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess during the presentation, I hope that we will be able to respond to a question that I placed uh, to Dr. Ivory about, uh, the need for, uh, some assistance with, uh, especially in workforce development. Uh, there's such a, be able to be a way we can connect the, uh, areas of need, jobs. You, we have jobs, we don't have those that are trained. And I hope that somewhere we will be able to connect those two. And, uh, there are people out there who want to be state nurses or in the healthcare field. And, uh, they can't afford to quit these, uh, fifteen dollar, uh, or less, or, uh, jobs to go and be trained. But if they do, and I would think that we ought to be able to tie that to our business community who need, especially hospitals, who need this. Isn't there a way that you can connect all of these parts to be able to, um, help them with their, uh, childcare so that they can go to school? Help them with their rent so that they can go to school? Because once they do and they get trained, then you will have, be able to fill those gaps where hospitals are, are, are lacking, uh, uh, healthcare workers. So, but we got to do something to connect all those pieces so that the people who need it will can get trained for it and we can address some of the barriers to them being able to get that training. And I hope that this will be able to address some of those needs.
No, thank you, ma'am commissioner. And I, I would just tell you that when you and Dr. Ivory were, were talking, the team was vigorously texting me about, uh, you know, uh, the presentation and how they think that what you will see today will highlight, you know, what you're talking about. And, and what I will say is, um, workforce development is probably the area where there's ongoing programming discussions. Only because you're right, there, there's so many needs, there's so many players, uh, in the space. But as the chair can tell you, uh, you know, this has been a hot topic, a conversation that the commission, we want to be a part of. Uh, and so I don't want to steal the thunder of Wafa De Niro, but I think you will be happy with her portion of the presentation.
Uh, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner, Baker McCormick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see, um, I just wanted to clarify that as we talk about the resources and the dollars that I know and the other Detroit commissioners know, because we were advocates for Detroit, of course. That's who we represent. So we want to know, I want to know where the numbers fit in for Detroiters. So I don't know if you have, uh, thought that through or looked at each municipality, how funds are going to be, uh, divided up for each project. But, uh, I'd like to, to know, know that as we move forward.
Sure. Sure. Let, let me just very briefly say, you know, one, you know, we are administrate, we are an administration that has not been shy about spending money in Detroit. I think that's been proven. I think if you looked at, you know, our performance, particularly during the CARES dollars, you know, Wayne County received, you know, initially 188 million dollars of CARES funds. But the city of Detroit received more than double of, of that. And when we had programming, like the workforce, like the, the small business grant or the nonprofit grant or the, you know, the grant that we received an award for, which is the 500 debit card, you know, restaurant workers grants. We never closed Detroit off to any of those programs. And I will say that, you know, significant amount of Detroiters received the benefit of some of those funds, despite the fact that the city of Detroit received even more money than the county. That being said, you know, we have programs that are restrictive from spend, some of these programs, not the American Rescue Plan dollars, but in particularly in the housing area, like our ERAP program, that the federal legislation won't allow us to spend in Detroit. Not for any bad reason, only any other than Detroit received their own set of funds, much like our HUD dollars, you know. Detroit usually sees more than double the amount of HUD dollars. We received even more than that, actually. And so the federal government is, is just spreading the money around, if you will, to be able to administer, you know, in concentrated areas. We have not said to ourselves, we are going to concentrate X amount of percent to any municipality. Like I said, we have way more need than we have money. And so as projects come about, our hope is to, you know, fund the appropriate project and bring every project before the commission and do it the best way we can. And if there are opportunities to team up with the city of Detroit, we will absolutely explore those opportunities.
Okay, so just to clarify what you just said is what we're talking about today and the various allocations and projects, this is going to be mainly for outside Detroit municipalities.
No, I, I, no, that's not, I did not know. What I'm saying is we have not put a price on a certain amount of money going towards Detroit, a certain amount of money going towards, you know, out county municipalities. We're going to take whatever opportunities exist in front of us. And we will judge every opportunity by the triangle that we showed you earlier. We'll ask ourselves, is it, you know, appropriate with the legislation? Is it feasible? Is there a leverage opportunity? And we'll judge each one of those projects accordingly, hopefully within the framework of these buckets.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And remember when each department head is going to speak about the different areas, after they speak, we'll have an opportunity to ask questions. I just wanted to get some general questions out of the way now for Khalil while he's here. Commissioner Vice Chair Palomera?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Khalil for your update. My, my question relates to, most of these appear to be project related. Is it possible to either directly or indirectly address our problem in hiring new Wayne County deputy sheriffs in terms of either bringing up their pay or whatever it takes to attract deputy sheriffs, because it's been an ongoing problem exacerbated by the pandemic? And is there a way that we can use these funds either directly or indirectly to address that issue?
It's, it's a great question. I think, you know, indirectly, you know, workforce development is certainly a, a, a way of looking at that for sure. Directly, you know, you know, we have been in a lot of conversations with trying to provide more resources to the sheriff's office. And Janelle Allen has been leading those efforts. I have spoken not just with the sheriff, but the undersheriff about trying to allocate more funding and finding out new and interesting ways to generate revenue for funding for those resources. But I will say, when it comes to the American Rescue Plan dollars, budget discipline is going to be very important. What we don't want to do is increase budgets so that in three, four years from now, we're left with a bill that we cannot pay. It's, it's, it's one of the ways that the previous administration got into trouble. And so we're very, very conscious of that. That being said, Madam Chairwoman can tell you, and I've had a lot of conversations with her about this. We need to do something for retention and attraction of folks. We've been in deep conversation, not just with the sheriff's office, but the prosecutor's office, the clerk's office and the like. And the hope is, is if we increase in those areas. Just understand, Commissioner, we also have to increase revenue to sustain the increases we have in budgets. And so I say that because if you look at the buckets that you have here on the screen, many of those things will help sustain new revenue. And that's the answer to a lot of the problems that you're talking about. And so, you know, we're not about short-term fixes. You know, we're about long-term fixes. And I think, and I think we take that very, very serious.
Thank you. Appreciate your keen awareness and approach to the long-term solution. Thanks again.
Two more questions, Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Bedeau.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Khalil for all that you do. But I just want to know that over 40 years ago, the blacks were displaced in Hamtramck. And there were several homes that had not been completed. Have those homes been completed recently? Or are they going to be completed? I know that we have built other homes in Hamtramck, but I want to know about these.
It's a great question. And I think you're, you know, you're referring to the lawsuit that, that took place of the displacement of the homes for, I can't remember the freeway and, and half a dozen other things.
I-75, yes.
That's right. Yeah, and I know that we, I don't have the answer right at my fingertips. But if you would allow me to provide you with a response for that. My best recollection, and I kind of see Terry Carroll on here, is that there was an announcement recently about the last home that needed to be completed. Let me just say that completing that home nowhere near makes up for the injustices that occurred. More needs to happen in Hamtramck. But I think that if I remember correctly, and I, I want to get you a more concrete answer. The homes that were supposed to be built to settle the lawsuit were built, to my knowledge. And I will give you a more accurate update.
Okay, I, I would like to get a complete analysis on, on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bedeau.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Khalil for this presentation. Thank you for working very hard during this pandemic to navigate the Wayne County through these difficult times, along with the Evans administration. My colleague, Commissioner Palomera touched on the sheriff's department, how can we hire more people that we can keep? I totally agree with, with his, with his question and his concern. But I also, we desperately need to do something about the, the Wayne County Clerk's Office and the prosecutor's office with the backlog of, of many cases, especially in the prosecutor's office. They're not able to retain and keep some of these prosecutors because it's very competitive out there. So these are a couple of areas Khalid of concern. But I also had a quick question. I think you mentioned early on that some of this money could be used, correct me if I'm wrong, could be used for loss of revenue. Does that mean some of these local 43 communities in Wayne County could use some of this money to, to offset some of the losses that they have because of COVID?
That is correct. I will tell you that there is a, a formula for how to account for the lost revenue. I can also tell you that, again, I just want to caution everybody, there is still one more final interim rule that will be coming out before the end of the year. And the reason why that, that is significant is because we have seen an unusually high amount of questions about revenue loss. And I suspect, and this is, you know, in a lot of conversations with our consultants, that the next interim rule that will come out will really clarify a lot of the issues around revenue loss. So I, you know, in concept, what you're saying, as far as we understand the legislation, you're, you're, you're right on board. Reserve judgment until its next interim, interim rule comes out because it's going to clarify a, a lot of things. You know, one of the questions that keeps getting asked is, why not just claim everything for revenue loss and just use it on whatever you want after that? And we've been advised a lot that that is not the, you know, it's a dangerous thing to do because that's not what the purpose of the legislation is. So it's something that I think the Department of Treasury is acutely aware of and, and I think will be addressed in next interim rule. To your other points, Mr. Commissioner, you know, nobody knows the issues in the prosecutor's office better than me. You know, and, and I, you know, for those who don't know, I was a prosecutor for, for several years there. And I can honestly tell you that, that some of the hardest working people and some of the, you know, most underpaid. And so that is something that Janelle Allen is very passionate about. We've had a lot of conversations with not just the prosecutor, but also with the mayor of Detroit, with the Third Circuit Court, and with Madam Clerk and 36th Street Court about the backlog. And what I can tell you all is there are ongoing activities. It's a coordinated effort between several different jurisdictions. And, and again, you know, it's sort of balancing the weight between budget discipline and addressing the long-term needs. The ultimate issue here is, is we need to generate more revenue. That's the ultimate, we, we need money to be able to pay these people. We need money to be able to provide them healthcare and retirement, as Madam Chairwoman has been, you know, pushing, pushing us on. And so, you know, spending money in ways, leveraging money, leveraging is, is very important. Because if we can take money and, you know, double it, you know, those opportunities are worth taking advantage of.
Thank you Khalil.
Thank you. And again, as I stated at the beginning of this meeting, we had a long, we have a long meeting ahead of us. If we do 30 minutes for each of these topics, we're talking about another three hours of meeting. So we'll go for about an hour or so and maybe possibly take a break and then come back if it's going long as I anticipated will be. So at this time, Khalil, you were introducing Ms. Malita Jordan?
Yep. We can go to the, give me a very, go two slides up. Thank you. And Madam Chair, we, we'll be back. You know, we'll all, you know, anytime anybody needs us, we'll always come back and, and present or clarify anything.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Malita Jordan, and I'm the Director for the Department of Health, Human and Veteran Services. And thank you, Madam Chair, as well as the other esteemed members of the commission. I appreciate being here. Thank you Khalil for giving me this opportunity. If I could just take a moment, however, to try to also address Commissioner Clark Coleman's question around nurses. And because I am a nurse, an advanced practice nurse, I thought I would just simply share with you in terms of about 20 years ago, the federal government actually provided funding for nurses, particularly registered nurses, to go to school, which they actually paid for them to be educated for a three-year and/or four-year program. That money went away. However, because of COVID, a tremendous number across this country of nurses died due to COVID. And so now there is a national move and advocacy for President Biden to reinstate the Nursing Training Act so that nurses can be enrolled into various universities and programs in order to become a registered nurse to practice. And so I am very hopeful that the administration will be responsive to that so that more funds can be put in at the national level that will trickle down, of course, to states and counties to help nurses be able to be trained to care for its residents and citizens. So just wanted to share that with you. So I just want to start off by saying that what all of you already know, that the coronavirus pandemic has really revealed deep-seated inequities in healthcare for communities of color and has amplified social and economic factors that contributed to poor health outcomes. The pandemic disproportionately impacted our community of color because of compounding longstanding racial disparities in terms of access to care and the lack of quality of care. We were disproportionately impacted, along with Latinos as well. People of color are at an increased risk for certain illnesses. And if they contracted COVID-19, they were due to higher rates of underlying health conditions such as diabetes, high blood pressure, asthma, obesity in comparison to whites. In 2021, the county health rankings is a collaboration between the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the University of Wisconsin Population Health Initiative, which basically looks at health outcomes and health factors across the country. And here in Wayne County, which also includes Detroit, because when data is collected, it is also collected on Detroit because it is in Wayne County. And as Khalil had mentioned, we are last ranking number 83 of the counties in Michigan with having the lowest health outcomes and health factors. When we are looking at the four pillars or priorities, it is looking at our community needs. Health assessment will help us also to drill deeper to get a better understanding of what is driving the health inequities in Wayne County and particularly out Wayne County. Also looking at how can we improve health indicators? And our health indicators are, again, looking at those risk factors and looking at also those diseases and illnesses, expanding access to behavioral healthcare services and eliminating barriers to education. Those are areas that we're going to focus on. But I also want to share with you that the chronic diseases, again, are major causes of disability as well as death. Seven out of the 10 leading causes of death in out Wayne County and Detroit were chronic diseases. The number one is heart disease, followed by cancer, and third by chronic lower respiratory disease, which can also be known as COPD. The fourth one was accidents, unintentional accidents. Fifth was stroke. Six was Alzheimer's. Seventh was diabetes. Kidney disease followed as number eight. I share that with you because these particular leading causes of death have remained the same since 2016 in Wayne County. And so sometimes they may flip-flop one or two, meaning that diabetes was once number six and now it's number seven. And this is the latest state data that we have, which was done in 2019. When you think about modifiable risk factors, such as the lack of physical activity, inadequate nutrition, tobacco use, and excessive alcohol intake, all contribute also to chronic disease and exacerbate those conditions. So we have an opportunity to make changes and to address these particular issues. I think all of you recognize that the health status of our nation, our state and our county is the well-being or really provides us with the well-being of our residents and is reflected in our communities in terms of our men, our women, our mothers, our infants, our young children, our youth, our youth with special healthcare needs, and our aging adults. So therefore, we have a chance with this new opportunity to not only move the needle, but to address long-term issues and health issues in terms of not only access and quality of services, but to be able to change the trajectory so that we can address and develop and work with other collaborators and partners so that we can address areas of diabetes, hypertension, heart disease, because all these things contribute to people dying prematurely. And so if we can move to the next slide, please. So as we look at addressing health disparities and health inequities, we know that all of this will require us to partner and to leverage opportunities with our business community. we know that all of this will require us to partner and to leverage opportunities with our business community, with our higher education, with our faith-based organizations, with our nonprofit organizations, with our, what I consider, non-traditional partners so that we can really take not only funding, but also resources that others have that we can address these particular issues. Most recently, when I thought about as we address health inequities as well as looking at community assets and thinking in terms of how do we move forward. Recently, I spent time in the city of Wayne, recognizing that, as most of you know, that we had a exceedance, a lead exceedance. And so I had the opportunity to work with a number of the Commission members, but in addition to people within the community, to address the fact that the water had a higher level of lead. And so therefore, we know that as we look at our community health needs assessment, we need to be able to address that every family has clean water. As you know, the Clean Water Act was passed in 1972. And so therefore, from a public health perspective, it is critical that every family have clean drinking water. So we can certainly move forward in providing clean drinking water by reducing lead in drinking water in homes. We can replace faucets that were manufactured before 2014 because a number of those faucets that were manufactured in 2014 contained lead. And so therefore, we want to make sure that we have the types of faucets that meet the NSF standards, which is the NSF sixty-one standards that actually is lead-free. In addition to, we will, we can work with our community and our residents within our communities around when they receive the filter previously perhaps, that we can look at the lifespan of the filters. They don't last forever. So we must make sure that we can replace filters that we dispensed. And so therefore, we can actually work with our community members in terms of providing not only new cartridges, but also making sure that we can provide the training that's necessary so that a homeowner knows when to change their filter as well as cleaning the aerators that goes along with that. So we want to make sure that our children, our families, and all have clean drinking water on a regular basis. That that should not be something that they should have to contend with, that they don't have access to that. Along with also improving our health indicators, knowing and my colleagues will be talking more about more open space in parks. But again, having increase in physical activity is key to reducing cardiovascular disease and also improving health outcomes. Making sure that there is an opportunity in our built community that when we have individuals that are on scooters and or motorized vehicles, that there is a lane that we can develop highway lanes or the street lanes, as you well know, you have seen like I have since I've been here. I have seen people in their wheelchairs and unfortunately, they're in the highway and cars quickly make a right or a left turn. And that individual could be hit because there really is not a lane. You have bike lanes in some areas, but there's not necessarily lanes in our, in some of our non-city proper and or in some of our rural areas. Having that will allow those individuals with disabilities, as well as our children who ride bicycles, to have an opportunity to safely navigate from point A to point B. And so once again, looking at how we can improve the built community for those with disabilities and they can pass safely along the streets. When we think about looking at our indicators as well, preventative screenings is critical because we know when we screen for breast cancer, prostate cancer, colorectal cancer, cervical cancer, that we're able to catch it at an early stage. And because we can catch cancer at an early stage, then we can provide treatment. However, within the African-American community particularly, we see more stage four prostate cancer, more stage four of breast cancer, and more stage four of cervical cancer because individuals come in late for care. But more importantly, COVID has impacted that. As many as you recall that when the initial impact of COVID, most of our outpatient hospitals, clinics were closed, as well as the surgery centers and or where diagnostic procedures were done. So now we have a backlog. It will take time for us to get through that backlog. So therefore, we have to work with our partners out in the hospitals, our health systems, not only to increase the opportunity for people to be screened, but more importantly, to expand the number of providers that will accept Medicaid and Medicare. Because when they don't accept Medicare and Medicaid, those individuals have less chance of being screened and seen and averting themselves from developing a chronic disease and or a long-lasting debilitating disease. And so we're focused, as we look at improving our indicators, is also doing clinical linkages, meaning that if we had more diabetes and hypertension preventative programs within our communities where if a person went to our hospitals and or a medical center, if they referred back to their community, they could have diabetes teaching. They could have what we call self-management, diabetes self-management, which allows individuals to monitor their hemoglobin A1C, would allow them to be able to work with community health workers and give them not only technical assistance, but also would be able to provide them with the additional resources that they may need. And so we find that if we could increase that and recognizing that the DPP program, which is another diabetes program, is also paid by Medicaid. CMS is actually covering the cost of that. And so we want to get that information out because that will help prolong one's life as well as keep their diabetes under control. In addition, a mobile van, you've heard me speak about this before, but having a a mobile van in our communities. We have a number of our partners who may, who have some. But if the county also had a mobile van, is able to provide healthcare services within people's community, meaning that they can get screening, they can get flu vaccine, they can also get their COVID vaccinations there. Children can get their other immunizations there like chickenpox, measles, whooping cough. And so a mobile van would allow us when we have sometimes the flooding that we've already experienced this summer and previously even early, late, late summer that we experience, it, a mobile van can be, can be transported to all of the other jurisdictions and communities within Outway County. So recognizing too that the physical activity and healthy eating and I talked about, we are going to be working with our school districts, of course. We have a school breakfast program, you know, that is national. And yet we have very few students, less than twenty-nine percent of students participate in the school breakfast program in our, in our public schools. This is an opportunity that we can make sure that every child that goes to school is not hungry, that a child can actually receive the, a hot meal when they arrive at school. So as we look to our behavioral health services, I also wanted to share the impact and that has really hit home for me in terms of the number of our children and our youth. In some situations, it has been perhaps apparent that was succumbed to the COVID-19. But there's also been two parents that have lost their lives due to COVID and have left children homeless as well, as well as left kids. Orphaned. I have to pause here for a moment and say I'm struggling this morning because I lost a loved one yesterday to COVID.
I'm so sorry, Jordan. So sorry for that.
This is Janelle, Chief Operating Officer with the County Executive's Office. Malita, as she said, and I can jump in here, yes, that so many of us have been impacted so severely by COVID. And unfortunately, as Malita is saying, she just recently got news of some very close family members impacted and lost a relative. But I think the impact we're seeing that so many of us, probably everyone here, has felt this impact personally.
Yes.
And not to mention the impact on our communities. And as Malita was saying, starting out, so many of our children have actually been left orphaned. They're literally, they have lost parents, both of their parents to COVID. We know, can you imagine the impact of that on their behavior, their mental health? And we know that we have got to, one, assess how deeply this has impacted our children and their families. And we have got to put programs in place that will effectively help. So we know that a lot of our children, even just by some of the the youth in our juvenile detention facility, even before the pandemic, that they have come in and they have severe behavioral health issues. In our communities, we have not been, we don't believe effectively addressing those. And COVID has only exacerbated that. I think as Khalil started this by saying, COVID put a spotlight on so many gaps in our services. And this is one area in particular. In the juvenile detention facility, we have several youth who are actually over age eighteen, but they have such severe behavioral issues that the state has not been able to find them a placement. And so they have been in the juvenile detention facility for well over a year. And our facility is really designed, it is for detention, not for treatment. And so this is just, again, we cannot stress how COVID has severely impacted. We also know that even with regard to adults, when we have that adults, we know that some adults are arrested and they clearly should not be sent to a prison or jail. They should be sent to a facility where they can receive behavioral health services. This is what we mean, we say decriminalize behavioral health. But they're sent to the jail because there no, there's no other place for them.
Right.
We definitely want to explore. I know we've heard of different programs, including, you know, the one that a number of our stakeholders have been exploring that believe in Miami-Dade County. We're certainly considering that, but we want to find something that we feel we're going to get us the effective outcomes that we absolutely need and now to have an impact on all the behavioral health needs for both children and for adults. Also with our returning citizens, also have, say, detained in our jails. And they maybe had committed, you know, criminal offenses, but as they're leaving, that they definitely will need some also behavioral health services when they're returning to their communities. That is referring to behavioral health services for returning citizens. And then Malita, I believe, has touched upon the eliminating barriers to education, that a program that we are considering, community and schools with wraparound services with the bomber group, that is designed where we know that schools are a hub, children go to school, that if we can have services that where it brings the families to the hub where they can get access to a plethora of services, including, let's say, health services. We would like to start having perhaps even nurses from our public health clinics physically there in the schools. That we have clinics, not just when we're doing, let's say, a dental vision, hearing and vision, but where you know that there's sound, where you can come get services. So many of our families, especially those most needy, do not have access to a primary care physician. That they know they could get regular access to standard medical services. Also other things, like perhaps with attorney, legal services, just again, whatever the family may need and using the school as the hub. With regard to, we know with our reading and comprehension, we know that it is absolutely critical that you must be able to read to be able to succeed in this world in life. We also know that a number of our students have been severely, severely harmed by the lack of access to education because they could not go in the school and they just were not getting, some not even any education, let alone the level they needed through the virtual learning. So we are also looking at considering some programs that are specifically designed to help increase the reading comprehension for students in grade, the third grade to the twelfth grade, to get them up to their, a minimum to the reading level for their grade, if not even above that. So as Khalil even started, while definitive decisions have not been made, these are the concepts we do expect, these are going to be the four pillars we will be looking at. Starting where Malita has said initially with the community health needs assessment, that that assess is while we are doing that assessment, that'll take time. It is very comprehensive. It is to look at it in essence about what are the needs from a health equity and disparity standpoint? We want to involve all of our community stakeholders. We have a number of partners, including our health systems, our school systems. We want to assess what resources are in the community now and within our county. And then where are the gaps and how do we close the gaps? While we're doing that, though, we will start doing some of these other things. Like we want to move from a sickness model to a wellness model. We want to move to, again, prevention from react, from reaction to prevention. And then one thing we look at doing initially is getting a mobile clinic, as she mentioned. That way we can get out there in the communities. We want to become far more community-based, to be far more accessible to those who needs us most.
With that. Thank you, Janelle, for that explanation. And Ms. Jordan, we want to certainly send our sincerest condolences to you during this difficult time. Certainly in our prayers. So sorry to hear about your loss. But thank you both for the presentation. This is good. I would say high-level information as we move forward. And I know we're going to have many more meetings such as this with other community, the whole. This is like the framework conversation. And then the next would be actually what the plans are to implement this. Are we talking about have additional funds put into our own department and hiring people? Are we talking about granting organizations, are we expertise in this, in these fields? You know, all of those specifics we'll, I'm sure, discuss in our next meetings as we go forward with this. I do have a couple of questions really quick. Mr. Arga, the Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Thank you. I'm really impressed with your presentation and also with your assessment of what our constituents really need. Back in the nineties, we had doctors lined up. I'll just take my district, for example, the corridor of E Course Road, E Course and River Rouge and Linkin Park in southwest Detroit. We had an Outer Drive, we had several other corridor streets, doctors who people could go to. We had the Outer Drive Hospital that our area could go to, especially the area that is the most polluted area in southwest Detroit. We lost all of those. The doctors that were serving those areas have long died. And we have not been able to get any other clinics to open up with in that area. So the need is great. And I think with them not being able to walk to or bike to some of these clinics, of course, they're just not going to the doctor for preventative care. So it is a big issue and I am so, so glad to hear your presentation because you're right on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Clark Coleman, I believe, is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Malita, for your presentation. We all have suffered through what you're going through right now. So we've all lost so many people that we should, probably should not have had to lose. But I just want to digress for a second to inform Malita because she is new to this state and I'm so impressed with her. To let her know that I took the opportunity to call and invite on here today Bernice Anthony, who is the former Health Director for Wayne County back in the eighties. And I just wanted to let you know that she is here and she's a dynamo, she's retired, but she's a dynamo. And I'm sure that Vern would love to at any time to meet her and 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 to offer her any advice or help that she can. But I'm, Vern is is a role model that I think that, that I think that Malita would love to meet.
Well, thank you for that virtual, thank you for that virtual introduction and meeting. That would be great. And I actually was hoping and thinking that I was stronger than what I was today. So I do apologize to all of you, but.
No need to apologize. No apology. No need to apologize.
None, that's not necessary, as a matter of fact.
Well, Irma, thank you. Thank you so much for the, for the invitation. I'm glad I was available. I've been very impressed with what I've seen. I've been very impressed with what I've seen and Malita really looking forward to meeting you. And we'll have to make sure that happens.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's go right ahead because we do have about five more presentations. Uh, Commissioner Colleen.
Unmuting. Thank you, Madam Chair. I can't tell you how delighted I am to hear this discussion and to hear, uh, the commitment from the administration in this area. I do agree with the overarching principle that we can't make any investments that, uh, we're going to have to do cutbacks in three or four years when the, when the money runs out. To that end, you know, uh, through my involvement, the Services Committee and Authority Health and, uh, the Mental Health Authority, these, these issues have been discussed for, you know, the last decade. The social determinants of health and using that as a, uh, guidepost for how to deliver healthcare. Uh, going from the sickness model to the wellness model, which gets, uh, which is what the social determinants get at. Uh, the racial disparities that have been laid bare, uh, by this pandemic. So I am, uh, I'm delighted we're going to invest in this area and best thoughtfully. And some of the other things that we've talked about today, like education and jobs, um, that goes back to social determinants of health. Uh, unhealthy people, uh, have a harder time holding a job if they have to take a lot of time off. Um, the same is true of going to school and holding down, uh, being able to get, uh, proper education. And I think we're well positioned to do this too, because we have three public, uh, organizations in this county, uh, to partner with and already have some expertise in this area. And that, of course, would be the Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network, um, Authority Health, which, uh, was created, uh, by an agreement between the City of Detroit, the County of Wayne and the State of Michigan were signatory to that. And, uh, so our charge is to, uh, broaden the safety net over there and provide more services as well as our Western Wayne FQHCs. So, uh, I'm, I really wanted, uh, I'm looking forward to further conversations to get more into the details of what we're going to do here, but this is, uh, there's plenty of ground to plow here and there's plenty of, uh, uh, partners that we have in the county, uh, to help us do that. And, uh, so I'm glad to see a commitment in the neighborhood of forty, uh, to fifty million here. Uh, I, we haven't talked about this much at the commission, I'm decide, or in the county in general. So I'm delighted to see that, uh, this conversation now is integrated, uh, into what we're doing for public health. Uh, that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moretti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize if this was touched on because I, I did get a phone call uh, that I had to answer in the middle of this, but have we, or is there any money put aside or are we involved in anything with, the higher rate of suicide in, in Wayne County? Um, there's been articles written about it. I've heard of several cases, you know, indirectly um, during this pandemic of kids being so isolated and, um, is there suicide prevention programs specifically? Like COVID related, or are we planning on doing anything like that if we're not doing anything right now?
The Commissioner, correct, Moretti, yes, we are going to be addressing suicide because it is a major issue and particularly amongst our, um, young people. So we will be looking and working again, uh, in collaboration with other partners to address that and making sure that we get more services, not only in the community, but also in the schools. So we have to be able to, um, address this issue with more programs, more opportunities and resources that will reach our young people in a way that they will re, be able to receive the message. So I will say to you that, yes, um, I've already had and meet on a regular basis with D-Wen. Uh, we'll be meeting with some other nonprofit organizations, have met with folks at Access as well. So we certainly will make this as part of the, um, our community health needs assessment, but more importantly, in part of looking at behavioral health services that are community based so that we can address the issue of suicide in the county.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dobbs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I know that Khalil mentioned earlier the impact that the COVID nineteen pandemic has had on women in various aspects, um, you know, with the workforce and childcare and, um, various aspects of life and everything ties together. And, um, I'm, I'm wondering if there's been any interest or conversations, um, for the county to have a special women's health clinic, or, um, you mentioned the, a mobile clinic, maybe just a mobile clinic specializing in women's health. Um, is there anything for that?
Was not thinking of using the mobile clinic to have a women's clinic in that. However, I will say that I am looking at our Public Health, uh, Department in terms of providing and expanding additional services for women. As you know, we, well, maybe you don't know, we recently hired a nurse practitioner. So I am certainly, um, making sure that we are able to expand our caseload in terms of the services that we're providing. I know that, uh, my staff certainly have, uh, worked with your women's commission that you have. So therefore we want to continue those types of connections and collaborations as well. I have dedicated my entire thirty-five, forty-year career to women's health. So I will tell you that is something that I do anticipate for us to move upon and address a number of issues, particularly depression is a major issue, particularly for postpartum women. So we want to not only address that issue, but we want to make sure that we are, um, utilizing all of our services where women are seen to be able to assess if a woman is having issues in terms of depression. Also, um, abuse issues is another area that we need to address domestic abuse. Uh, being able to, uh, address those women who may be caregivers also for their parents who may have Alzheimer's. That is a tremendous burden and it is a tremendous opportunity that we can provide a service. And also, you may or may not know that more women are impacted with Alzheimer's than men. Daughters of mothers are more impacted and are at risk for Alzheimer's. And so again, providing education and making sure also that we can address issues and concerns that women have would be an opportunity that could happen within our sites as well as a number of the communities that's here. Uh, there's a number of groups called Mocha Moms, uh, that's available specifically for African-American women that help them to continue to either nurse, breastfeed, uh, and to support them as they're going through a transition. Uh, you also know that, um, in not only out Wayne County, but also in Detroit, have one of the highest mortality morbidity rates for maternal mortality morbidity as well as infant mortality. So once again, that has been a longstanding issue here, um, in Michigan. So an area again that we need to be able to address, uh, there are root causes. And these root causes have to do with social determinants of health, lack of access, late prenatal care, inadequate prenatal care. And so again, we have an opportunity to work with our health systems and do implicit bias. A number of the issues that we deal with is oftentimes coupled with, uh, not only the medical, uh, issues, but it's also coupled with implicit bias. So we need to be able to work with our providers, uh, in all domains to address this issue as well.
I agree. I'm, I'm so glad to hear all of that. And I know that you did a lot of at-home vaccinations for, um, not only elderly, but for women who had childcare issues that couldn't or didn't want to bring their young children to a vaccination clinic. So, um, I'm hoping that we can build upon that to expand to other healthcare needs for maybe, you know, for women who are in those situations. So thank you so much, Director Jordan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hades. You're unmuted, sir? Unmute yourself, Commissioner Hades.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Malita, I just feel saddened by your loss. Uh, we all felt that for last couple of years. But I'm speaking today for two reasons. I have a question and I have to thank you for your good leadership and responding to the, uh, uh, lead, uh, water issue in the city of Wayne. In less than two days, uh, you took action and have a distribution center uh, to give the filter and wherever the county have. Uh, it was a success, uh, story from your leadership, how fast you gather the volunteer, the employee. And I'd like to thank you for that. Uh, the second thing is, I know Khalil touched on a lot of the infrastructure money. Is there any effort or work with Khalil and having some funding to eliminate those lead pipe? Uh, some community have and they can't afford to deal with that issue?
So, uh, Mr. Commissioner, this is, that's a fantastic question and I do think that that is a public health issue. I will say that, um, you know, as Janelle, uh, reminds me over and over and over again, the federal infrastructure bill just passed, um, it is four thousand pages and we are going through it now. And there is money in there straight dedicated to, um, you know, removing lead from water and, and pipe issues. And our philosophy here is, and let me just set the stage now because I know I'm going to get a lot of questions on this. We do have money allocated for infrastructure, uh, in our plan here. Um, we also know that we have a federal bill coming. We don't know what all the details are, are in that federal bill. Um, we don't know if that money is going to go to the state. We don't know how much is going to come down to the county. We don't know if it's going to directly come to the county or come to us by virtue of the state. And we don't know what that allocation will be. What we know is this, we know we have a lot of infrastructure needs, probably more than there's money out there. And our philosophy has been, look, let's get all the projects that we can get from local municipalities. We'll look at those and judge them appropriately. And we are going to use restricted funds before unrestricted funds. And, and so if the federal infrastructure bill provides us money directly for lead, uh, and, uh, removal of lead in water, we will use those money first because it's restricted and leave this for more flexible dollars for other leverage opportunities or address whatever needs or do more public health or, or whatever the case is. But, um, as Malita mentioned, you know, lead in water is certainly an issue that we're, uh, interested in attacking, whether we attack it through the American Rescue Plan, infrastructure bill, a state program or anything else that might be available.
Excellent. And, and, um, and Khalil, I, I know you mentioned the community should ask for what they need, especially under lead. If some of them, uh, for whatever reason is they not paying attention or they didn't know they should apply for that specific, is that way the county could send a message to all of them to ask them, tell us about your lead pipe issue, uh, we want to make sure we deal with that issue. Uh, I have the experience to talk with a lot of people. I find out, uh, some of them aware of what's available from the state and some of them not aware of that. So, uh, because as you mentioned, it's health issue and it's important issue. So we need to increase the awareness of those municipality and what's available for them in that area. We may not have enough to resolve the problem hundred percent, but whatever we could do, it's better than the status quo.
Absolutely. And I think, um, you know, you've been a, a great attendee of ours on our Friday calls. A- as soon as we understand this federal bill, we plan to present to, again, you know, one of the reasons for that Friday call is because we know locals may not have some of the technical expertise that we have. Our plan is to, you know, present that federal legislation. Our, our hope is the state will also come out with programming and to deliver those programs by having guest speakers on and everything else on our Friday calls and then encouraging local municipalities to either apply for programs that are out there. We have business development managers dedicated to every one of your districts and they're getting to know the program managers, you know, directly. And we're having them, you know, sort of shove out programming that, by that means a communication. So to answer your question, absolutely, we will work with encouraging others to absorb much money as we can.
Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Jordan, again, uh, for your good leadership and, uh, uh, I hope, uh, you accomplish all what you, uh, been working on, uh, and the health area. And I think Janelle and Khalil listening, uh, they will give you the support and the money, I hope, for you to satisfy the need.
Thank you. Uh, two more questions, Commissioner Baker McCormick and Commissioner Kenlock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and thank you, um, Alita, for all that you are doing, um, and have done. I know you are new to us, but certainly not new to the issues related to health. Uh, Commissioner Moretti mentioned earlier, uh, about suicide. And, uh, as a veteran, uh, I'm concerned about the, uh, suicide rate of veterans as well and ensuring that our veteran population get the resources, um, that, that they need. So, um, as the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, I'm here and committed to help you move forward and whatever you need, uh, I am here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And certainly we'll be addressing that as well, recognizing that, again, um, a number of our veterans, certainly, um, this is an area of major concern for their families and we'll be addressing that and certainly look forward to working with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kenlock.
Thank you. Uh, Director Jordan, I know everyone keeps saying that you are new and you absolutely are new, but you came and hit the ground running. Um, each time that I've been able to participate in a meeting and you've been making presentations, presentations, uh, you, um, come, um, very well prepared, um, and you have become very learned as it relates to the issues in our community. So, uh, I, uh, hats off to you. Um, one thing I want to talk about is that right now, and I was very appreciative to hear you talk about the youth and the conversation of mental health needs. And as part of our need to focus on our, on our youth. Uh, last week, I was over, or the week before last, I was over at the University of Detroit High School. And these young people over at U of D High have put together a mental health initiative and they call it, they be nice, uh, at, uh, U of D. And what I absolutely would encourage is for a member of you or your team, uh, to reach out to these young people, um, and particularly the, uh, the president of the, the new president of the student, uh, Senate, um, Joshua Dorsey, um, because they're doing some amazing work and, and the commitment and the leadership that they're taking on this, uh, on this initiative is very impressive. And I think that would be great, uh, for someone in your department to reach out to that school.
Absolutely. What was again, the name of the, the group, the, I missed that.
Called B E Nice, Be Nice.
Be Nice, okay.
Yes, yes. Uh, yeah, and, uh, the, um, uh, I can get you the contact information over there, but the, uh, it's being led by these students and that's why I'm so impressed by that.
Good. Thank you for sharing that and we'll definitely follow up on that too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vice Chair Pope Tembe Do.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Director Jordan, uh, for, uh, your leadership. Janelle Allen, needless to say, you've been a star during this pandemic and, and I value, uh, everything that you have done, uh, from the, from the start, uh, along with the, the rest of the team from the, from the Executive's Office. And, uh, Janelle, we need to get together soon, uh, for another Zoom meeting because the numbers are spiking again. Uh, I've been sharing the, the daily report and a lot of people appreciate and value the report uh, that's put out every day, uh, by the Health Department. People wait for it for a little bit, for a brief period of time, you know, I, I stopped sharing it. Um, when the numbers went down and then people started messaging me and saying, no, they want to continue to be educated, to learn what's going on in the community. But I just wanted to thank you both for your leadership, uh, you know, these are very. You know, these are very challenging times and you've exhibited the outstanding leadership, Janelle Allen, throughout this pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, that looks like all the questions under public health. Is any closing remarks before we go to the next presentation?
In the interest of time, I think if we've hit the high points.
Thank you. Yes, we have. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Thank you, Ms. Allen. We'll go to the next presentation. Thank you so much. And again, this would not be the last time. This is just today, a high-level allocation suggestion for each of the different areas. Next item.
Next up, Madam Chair, we've got Wafa De Naro and Luz Mesa talking about economic development.
Economic development. And in the interest of time, if you could, all commissioners, ask a very pointed question so that we can get your question asked and answered. I would like for us to wrap up by 2:00. It's 12 and we still have five more presentations. So, thank you. Wafa, you're up.
Yep. So, Wafa De Naro, Wayne County Economic Development. Thank you so much for having us here today. For economic development, there's been a lot of lessons learned over the last two years. There, we've had a lot of issues that have been very much exasperated by the pandemic. And some of the takeaways have been support for small business in the form of a technical assistance program. And what we've been hearing from the communities as we've been going to each and every single community is that there's very much a large need for a Main Street program. And recently, everybody heard about what happened with Ford Motor Company. Ford Motor Company is building their electric battery plant down in Tennessee. And we know that that's a direct result of not having any sites that are site-ready and investment and ready for investment. So these are really the three flagship programs we're looking to launch using some of the ARPA funds. From here, I'm going to kick it to Luz Mesa to go into some of the details.
Good afternoon, everyone. Luz Mesa, newly the Deputy Director of Economic Development and small business guru on the team. As you all know, we did some extensive engagement last year with small businesses through our various grant programs. Khalil mentioned earlier, we had over 15,000 small businesses apply for any of the various programs that we ran through the last year and a half. And in that time, really what we learned from most of our mom and pop shops was that a lot of those businesses, while they had a high need for financial support, did not have the administrative preparation to go after a lot of the grants, the loans and other opportunities that were out there. I'm sure your offices, as much as ours, received communications from local small business owners who couldn't figure out how to submit all of the right documentation, who perhaps didn't have the right documentation. Their registration with the state was expired and they didn't know how to renew it or simply they just hadn't collected financials in quite a while. And in surveying them throughout the entire process of running our grant programs and understanding the needs, for the most part, those small business owners did indicate that their top three needs were, well, in the long run, their top three needs. In the short run, of course, they all needed grants. They were all looking for loans to help push them through the pandemic. But in the long run, they all indicated that they needed, the first one being a business and succession planning, the second being marketing support, the third one being online presence and/or online sales support. And of course, they all indicated that they needed support accessing lending and other financial products. And so the goal of the technical assistance program really is to provide professional services to our small businesses, to support them with the resources that they need to recover, to grow and to thrive over the coming years. That moves us into the Main Street programs, which is also an integral part of supporting our small businesses. It's another of those things that we learned during this pandemic. We didn't expect that we would really enjoy sitting outside of our local small businesses as much as we did. I think we could have all imagined that it was a great idea, but when we made it happen, we really discovered that there is something exciting that people love about being able to walk from business to business, to sit outside, to enjoy it. And people watch at all of our local small businesses. And a lot of our communities have reached out as well and have given us feedback indicating that they would appreciate support in activating their retail corridors, in improving their storefronts, in adding streetscaping to their streets to make sure that they're giving their residents an opportunity to come out and enjoy and as a part of quality of life, to really walk their communities, patronize those businesses, support those businesses and find all of the goods and services that they need within walking distance of their home.
So as far as site readiness, we all know that Wayne County is the most industrialized county in the country. Having said that, we have a lot of land, we have a lot of land that needs a lot of money to get it site-ready, to either get it cleaned up, put some investment into some of the environmental remediation or put some investment into drains, roads and other infrastructure to get it site-ready. While we have a lot of sites that are vacant, blighted, we need to put some money in to get them site-ready. Throughout the pandemic, there has been interest in moving to Wayne County never slowed down. There's still a large need for industrial, for manufacturing sites. We just have to make sure that when that interest comes, that we have the sites ready and, you know, we're ready to to invest in the sites and be able to attract these businesses to come over here. Next slide, Luz.
And so, again, as we assess the feedback that we've received from a lot of your communities, the city of Detroit, through their Detroit Means Business Program, has reached out to collaborate with us and to ask for support in furthering their technical assistance efforts. That followed by a lot of other communities that include Dearborn, Lincoln Park, Trenton, some of our chambers of commerce, as well as some of our small business service providers who have all reached out seeking opportunities to continue supporting their local small businesses with professional assistance in completing, you know, all the items that we've mentioned earlier, from business planning to marketing. From the Main Street perspective, I'm sure you can all think of business corridor within your community that could really use some activation and some support. As you all know, we did complete a retail study and on our website, you will find full detailed analysis of at least one corridor in each of our municipalities. But additionally, through the portal that Khalil mentioned, our communities submitted requests for support in a lot of our very well-known retail corridors, which includes Mac Avenue on the east side, as well as some of the SNF projects in the city of Detroit, including Warren and Lasser. I know I've talked to Commissioner Varga about Lincoln Park and their plans on South Fields. And we also have projects in Redford, Inkster, here on Township, Livonia and Trenton that were all indicated as priorities by those communities through our feedback form.
Yep. And as far as site readiness, while DTW and Willow Run are huge assets to Wayne County, DTW remains one of the only airports in the country that still have green space and still have undevelopable land around the area, which provides us a huge asset. Just putting in some of the infrastructure to get those sites ready to be able to get developers, to attract developers to Wayne County and in turn create jobs and create more development around the airport. Willow Run is another airport, another gem that really is underutilized. And then we've also heard from the communities, E-course, the E-course Mill is a huge development. It's a big green space and all they really need is access to the site. They need road access to the site to be able to get a developer to invest and create jobs. They've had a lot of developers show interest, but because there isn't direct access, because it has to run through the communities, they cannot develop that. They can't develop that site fully. And we also heard from Inkster, a lot of the sites in Aratropolis and MITC, which borders Northville and Plymouth. Next slide, please. So I think we'll hold here for questions. If there's any questions on the economic development portion.
Any questions? Any questions? And again, what will happen is that if there are programs, you all will bring them to us for final disposition. Any program that comes to you, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next presentation?
Next up, we've got our director.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was a little late squeezing my hands.
Commissioner Dahl, going back, go back one slide. There we go. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to keep with my woman theme here. I just wanted to ask, so I know Khalil mentioned that at the beginning of the pandemic with the PPP programs, over 90% of minority of women-owned businesses were left out of those loans. Is there any conversation on special grants or programs for women-owned businesses?
Let me just try that. I'm glad you asked, Madam Commissioner. With our Small Business Technical Assistance Program, there's a couple of conversations that we're having. In addition to the services that a lot of those folks requested, the ones that Luz mentioned, right? The succession planning, marketing, those types of things. We're also talking about a small business lending program in the hardest areas, hardest-hit businesses and areas of need. You all know, at the beginning of the pandemic, we did a program with TCF and now it's moving to become Huntington Bank. We're looking intently at the results of those programs and the successes of the program. I will say that that program was at the very beginning of the pandemic. And so, you know, the numbers in that lens might be a little skewed and so we'll look at that. But I think the intent of all of these programs is to hit the hardest areas, minority and women-owned businesses, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next.
Infrastructure. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I think as we just heard from our previous two presenters, mainly all road to lead to the infrastructure. As we're looking at improving our areas, we looked at three areas best eligible for this funding. We looked at, no surprise, our sewers and our drains, establishing a sustainability program and of course, improving our road infrastructure. Getting back to our sewers and drains, and by the way, commissioners, you guys had a wonderful Triconic Summit last Friday, which our Drain Commissioner, along with others, did an excellent job articulating the need for improvements in our sewers and our drains. When you look at our system, take one, Rouge Valley, that services 13 communities, that has not had a major expansion since the 60s. But we've had enormous growth in three areas as it relates to residential and economic growth that's expanded really the capacity and the flow of most of these systems. When you look at the climate change, that has increasingly, you know, gotten worse and really thawed out in the last couple of years and particularly this summer. When you look at sustainability, and these are going on to the whys. You know, the county and the state actually are really kind of behind as it relates to creating and developing a plan to address sustainability. We need to get going in this area. When you look at, like GM has already stated, probably in five years, they will only be making electric vehicles. You know, we need to be starting to focus on energy efficiency and looking at the ever-changing, rapidly fast pace of our climate. The Washington Post just recently ran a story that really focused on our Michigan Great Lakes and said how our Great Lakes are thawing at a fearishly rapid pace that eventually will affect all of us. So we need to really obtain a consultant to come in here and help the county establish a sustainability plan so we can get started on focusing on energy and our rapid climate change. If not, I'm afraid we may be known as a county and a state left behind and we don't want that. Lastly, one of the areas that we focused on is our road infrastructure. As this honorable body knows, three years ago, you approved us to obtain a consultant to help us develop a 10-year asset management plan. We were a little surprised to learn that at that time, at least nearly 57% of our roads and bridges are in poor condition. That number was even a little shocking to us. So we want to use some of the funds that we're told a small portion may be used to improve our roads and bridges in that area. Everyone knows that our roads and stuff was really in bad condition before the pandemic. The pandemic definitely did not help. We were affected hard with some of the projects we could not do. 2020 was supposed to be the first year of our 10-year plan, but because of the pandemic, because of our staff even being hit with the pandemic, we even had a loss of life of one of our top managers. So some of the projects we could not do. Last year with our paving program, we anticipated, you know, doing double the lane miles, you know, addressing it, starting the first phase. Because of the pandemic, we were only able to do half of that. Having some of the funds that's eligible for our roads would help us get back on schedule, help us get back on track. Again, talking about infrastructure, Chairwoman, we could be here all day long, well past 2:00 PM and we could take all of this $339 million times 10, to be honest. But what we want to do is just focus on those three areas. So in the interest of time, I'm going to pause here because I kind of walked everyone through some of the whys. I'm going to have Elmika and Patrick very quickly walk through of some of the hows, how we can do it, specifically when you're talking about improvements that these funds can help us address our sewers, infrastructure and establishing a sustainability plan. So next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Elmika now and she'll give a brief statement as it relates to some of the plans and some of the projects for our sewers and our drains.
Thank you, Director Watts. And you couldn't have said it better in terms of all roads leading back to infrastructure. And again, you know, we want to make sure that we manage expectations because, you know, although, you know, we're not going to say that, you know, 50 or 70 million is not a lot of money, but when we look at the totality of the needs of infrastructure, you know, it does not meet everything that we know that we need. But it's important for us to try to do as much as we can with the dollars that are available. So just some examples, and you see here, there are several projects that are listed. Let's take our Rouge Valley system, you know, as an example. We're right now in the middle of a 10-year long-term corrective action plan for our Rouge Valley system, split up into six phases. We're in phase one right now. And this would, you know, have projects to, you know, remove river inflow that's coming into the system, to do some sewer inspections and repairs, manhole inspection and repairs, and also to improve some key pumping facilities. The idea behind the long-term corrective action plan is to extend the longevity of the system. And then, of course, when we think about drains, you know, top of the list without a doubt is North Branch E-course Creek Drain. You see that one? That's also listed here under the Community Requested Projects. You know, that particular drain is impacting nine communities in Wayne County, 52,000 parcels. When you think about the size of the watershed, it's over 30 square miles. And we've had engineering studies that have been done over the years, both by Wayne County, the US Army Corps of Engineers. The estimated impact of flooding is in the range of about $23 million annually. And the bulk of that, you know, is borne by homeowners in that particular drainage district. So how can we make a difference with, you know, some of these dollars that are available? You know, one thing that we have is a proposed $10 million maintenance plan to address things such as sediment removal, bank erosion stabilization, log jam removal, to try to get the drain restored back to its original capacity. But even with that being said, again, when we talk about expectations, that's not a cure-all. That's not a one-time fix. You know, when we look at what it would take to actually reduce long, you know, widespread flooding, we're probably talking about a project more along the magnitude of 300 million, maybe even more in terms of the size and the extent of what would be needed. But again, you see here several examples. Like I said, there's some others here, other drain maintenance, sewer separation projects, which is very important on the local levels to try to reduce abasement backups. And, you know, again, restoring, you know, making sure that drains are restored to their original capacity to reduce surface flooding. So regardless of whether it's a Wayne County project or a local community project, our goals are the same and that's to increase water quality and to reduce flooding. And I'll turn it over now to Patrick Cullen, who'll talk more about sustain- And I'll turn it over now to Patrick Cullen, who'll talk more about sustainability.
Thanks, Elmika. Good morning. Actually, good afternoon now to all the Commissioners. Some of you might be looking at this category of sustainability and thinking to yourselves, we have so many immediate needs in Wayne County. Can we even afford to consider sustainability issues, given all of our immediate concerns that we have? And I would argue, as Director Watts had mentioned earlier, we really can't afford to ignore sustainability issues any longer. Sustainability and sustainable developments often described as a three-legged stool. There are three Es on that stool that represent economy, environment, and equity. The interplay between economic development, environmental protection, and social equity is critical to building a community that will survive for generations to come. If any one of the legs on that stool fails, the entire platform from which we work falls. And the flood events from this past summer and the subsequent property damage that disrupted so many family lives were a real wake-up call. We are seeing in real time on the ground in managing our sewer and drain systems the results of what an increase in the number of flashy storms are. And flashy storms are shorter in duration but deliver significantly higher volumes of water that our infrastructure was never built to handle. We need to plan for and build climate and pandemic resiliency into our infrastructure, and we need to develop a county-wide plan that develops all of our, that evaluates all of our operations and develops broad policies on how we can do business in a more sustainable way. Important areas of focus likely will be on energy efficiency, transportation and fleet management, and environmental justice. We envision developing stakeholder-driven, community-based remedies that promote economic development in a way that fully considers its environmental and social impact on our residents. The third category listed here is road infrastructure. Director Watts has already outlined the critical need. I don't think we need to explain to any of the Commissioners the need.
No, we don't.
That we need in our roads. They're certainly the most visible element to our critical infrastructure.
Yes. And again, lastly, on that note, again, this portion of funds, you know, that are eligible for the roads, we will be looking to partner taking consideration. Some of the feedback we've had from the Commissioners, as well as the communities listed here, and some of the communities that's not listed. Again, as it relates to our roads and bridges, we're looking for that bigger pot of money that the President just signed yesterday. And again, like Khalil indicated, we don't know what that looks like, but we look for greater need of funding from that package and that bill to address our everlasting needs that relates to our roads and bridges. So, but that, you know, in the interest of time, again, we could talk all day about our infrastructure needs, but we will pause right here, Chairwoman, in case they have any questions, and then you can move on to the next presenter, which is still exciting, public spaces. Thank you so much, Director Watts. This is exciting because we know that our roads and sewers and drains are also very important. What's more exciting is the fact that the infrastructure bill was signed into law yesterday. So I'm so excited that we're going to have those additional funds to address these needs that we have as many companies, like communities across the country has. But I'm not talking about us away in county. We desperately need these funds to improve on so many different levels. So this is so exciting, and I can't wait to, we are done. I don't know whether we'll ever be done, but close to being a way that's going to be satisfactory to all of us. So I see a hand back Commissioner, if you don't.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Watts, thank you for your time. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all you do. You know, this recent flooding earlier in the summer has impacted many communities in Wayne County, especially like cities like Dearborn, where over 20,000 homes were damaged. Director Watts, you had mentioned that you were supposed to start implementing this ten-year asset plan in light of the recent flooding and the more frequent flooding and the global warming. Does that change your plan as far as shifting priorities and allocations of funds to address the flooding issue? I know we have the forty-one pumps in Wayne County, they're on the Wayne County roads, and those are going to be replaced over time. Does your priority change with this recent more frequent flooding?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Our priorities will always change when we get more funding. That's why we try to, our team, try to stay with projects we have before us now and projects for the future, just in case we get an extra pot of funding that's coming. So to your point, you're absolutely correct. When we look at our roads, and we have a list, we have identified that list, working with our consultants, but we have a time span as well. Money that's coming like from the bill that was signed yesterday, of course, that would help us with our schedule. Go to example, the example you gave, our forty-one pump stations. We have a seven-year plan to address those pump stations. Now, with this infrastructure bill coming with the additional fund, our goal is, our goal is to shorten it seven years because we need to. And then make it down. If I could get it to four years or three years with the extra funding, that's exactly what we're going to do as soon as we get the design done. So just to answer your question, absolutely, more funding will have a shift as long as we have the resources and we have the workers out there that can do the job, absolutely. Because we need to shorten our time. Our infrastructure is in dire straits needs. Fifty-seven percent of roads and bridges in poor condition, that's bad. We need to get that number down quickly.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Watts. I'm sure there'll be more to come. And this is a quick question before we go to the next presentation. I think you just stated this, many of the projects are already shovel-ready, if you will. So we're just waiting on the funding, but we already have the specs, engineering, the design, and they're ready. Or do we now have to account for all of those things before we can actually start the projects? Yes, especially as it relates to our sewers and our drains, especially what Elmika and Patrick have said, many of those are ready. You know, we can get ready. We have the consultants there. We have the engineering that's been done, the designs. And so, some of those projects, we were just waiting for some funding. And we're trying to, and we won't even stop here, even with the ARPA funds, as we've stated before and Khalil has stated before, we will continue. Even with the infrastructure bill, we will continue to beat the drum federally on the state level to get all the funds that we need because we are the largest county. We have the largest need. Okay, thank you so much, ma'am. Welcome. All right, next presenter, please.
Next up, we got Alicia Bradford in the Parks team.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the Commission. Thank you. I will be brief in my discussion regarding our public spaces. But as we talk about health and economic recovery and course of infrastructure, parks play a pivotal role within all of those categories as it relates to health, as it relates to opportunities of small businesses that we can offer through concessions in our park system. And as we look at our infrastructure, talking about connectivity and trails through that and how we may implement widening of road spaces in order to provide some non-motorized transportation to our park system. So it's in three categories that we're looking at for a total of between fifty to sixty million dollars. And it's broken down within our park improvements, our trails connectivity, and public spaces and recreational centers. And as mentioned, you will see regarding the expenditure categories, specifically how they apply to our projects and programs. Thank you. Next slide. And so again, we're broken into three categories, the parks, the trails, and the public spaces. Now, what we found out and what I've probably known as being in a recreation profession for well over twenty years, that parks are important. But what we found out during the COVID pandemic is that people really moved and flocked to their parks after Governor Whitmer lifted the stay-in-place and said to get out and to enjoy your neighborhood parks or your regional parks. We had an increase of attendance of at least thirty percent across municipality parks and as well as Wayne County and the Department of Natural Resources and here on Clinton Metro Parks. The National Recreation Parks Association did a survey assessment of 100,000 people across the United States about the importance of their parks. And eighty-three percent of adults indicated that the parks were important during the pandemic and thereafter for just their mental health, just the relief of stress, and to, you know, provide an opportunity for fitness. And with the fitness clubs and the gyms closed down, the only best economical opportunity was to go out to those parks. And through that, and through the increase of attendance, what we saw is people made more requests. So we need an increased maintenance, but people said, we want more parks. We want to be able to enjoy more amenities. We want more playdates. We want Gaga ball courts. We want pickleball courts. So run the gamut of everything of the ask. So it brought attention, but it also brought more requests. And so Wayne County in itself, our park system, we have a project list of nearly forty million dollars. As Director Watts said, infrastructure could probably take over the whole load. We could probably take over the whole load of public spaces as well, just for Wayne County. Because what we talk about is a over a hundred-year park system, but only a millage supported for nearly twenty-five to thirty years. So it needs to have that investment, not only into the infrastructure of the park system, but definitely the amenities that we're able to offer those users that do come to our programs and parks. One of our next slide, please. So one of the projects that you will see from what we received from a number of municipalities is including of our Naked Meals Campus. And as we look at our Naked Meals Campus, and hopefully a number of you have been out to Naked Meals, it's our administrative office, but it's also our Museum of Natural Education. And while we did our upgrades back in 2019 of the first floor lobby and some of the educational features, we're looking at phase two of that, looking at the second and third floor. But also creating just a Taj Mahal or Mecca of the facility for Heinz Park. That is where everything that happens within park system is created. So we should have an attraction point for those visitors that come to us. And they're also bringing out the educational aspects, eliminating those barriers of not being inside of the building, creating opportunity through our hydroelectric generator, our Miller House upgrades, which will also provide a small business opportunity in which we looked at some of those expenditures that were possibility under the requirements of these funds. But providing a concession agreement and also reactivating the barn where we've done Segway rentals, but maybe bicycle rentals or multiplicity of opportunities for those small businesses. And then utilizing our Park Village Fund, as well as the ARPA funds, and working with the communities, as you see these various projects listed here, which my team, myself, worked very closely with them through the Park Village and looking at their strategic master plans in order to determine best fit, how we can synergize those funds and leverage in order to create the opportunity of creating more park amenities and more park spaces for those communities and not specifically for Wayne County in itself, Wayne County Park System. And so the whole key of creating these parks, creating more amenities, again, is how do we get there? And we know that we try to have a walkable community, as Lucy spoke about, that people like a ten-minute walkable community, and usually that's for their neighborhood or their pocket parks. But the regional parks in which they'd like to get a larger gamut of amenities, such as Wayne County parks, we look at other opportunities, how they get there besides driving. And we've really been focusing on trails and connectivities through the mission of the county exec and also through the mission of the Southeast Michigan region of how we are joining all of these connection trails, greenways, in order to safely get families, individual users to our park system. So Elizabeth Isler will talk a little bit more about the trails and just some of the high level where we've been participating with other organizations, other counties, as we again look at the trails connections to our park systems overall.
Thanks, Alicia. Good morning or good afternoon now. Wayne County Parks has been working, as Alicia said, with communities and organizations in Southeast Michigan to connect trail systems. We are part of a group called Michigan Trail Southeast, and we're committed to improving the quality of life of all residents, increasing recreational opportunities, and contributing to the economic development in the region. With the impact of COVID, all these initiatives are just way more important than ever. It's imperative that everyone has access to a complete and safe trail system. We're fortunate here in our area to have a number of regional and statewide trails, and this, including the Iron Bell Trail, the Joe Louis Greenway, the Down River Link Greenways, the I-275 Trail, and our own Heinz Parkway, Lower Rouge Greenway and Rouge Gateway Greenway. Wayne County Parks has also been working on a regional and community planning effort called Connecting the Rouge Framework Plan. We've been studying ways to connect communities and neighborhoods to Trails, to Heinz Drive, the Lower Rouge, and to the Rouge Gateway Greenway. And ultimately, this effort will connect jobs, commercial areas, destinations, and services. The framework plan was developed during COVID and this provided an additional emphasis on the importance of people's need to be outside to exercise and improve their health. A couple of the projects that have resulted from this plan, one is currently in process, is the Phase Two of the Rouge Gateway Greenway. This will connect to Phase One that's near Michigan Avenue and the Ford Fairlane Estate. Will actually go under Michigan Avenue along the concrete channel of the Rouge River and end up by Southfield Road and Greenfield Village. The plan for this Greenway is to follow the concrete channel all the way to the Detroit River and connect to neighborhoods as it goes along. The 27.5-mile Joe Louis Greenway is also currently in planning, and that'll extend from the Riverwalk to the Highland Park, Dearborn, and Hamtramck. It includes the Dequender Cut, the Riverwalk, and then portions of what is also being planned of the Iron Bell Trail. This Greenway does travel through Wayne County Commission Districts two, three, four, five, and seven. We're also working with Friends of the Rouge and adjacent communities on the Lower Rouge River Water Trail. This trail is twenty-seven miles, of which seventeen travels through the Lower Rouge Greenway and will, in the Parkway, and will go from Canton to Dearborn. So like the Greenway, the Rouge River, Greenway, this one will end up also at the Detroit River. And this is another instance that will provide important amenity to residents to utilize for recreation and exercise. Alicia?
Thank you, Elizabeth. And so, Commissioner, as you see, we're maximizing our community collaboration, looking at, again, how we build synergy around the opportunities for grant funding and through our philanthropic community. Elizabeth mentioned our Connecting Rouge, which is funded by the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation to help with that study. So utilizing funds that may be existing grant opportunities and the ARPA funds and working with our communities as we try to create the parks and trails in public spaces as well. As you can see on the third category, there are a number of requests that have come from the community to create public spaces, either be an amphitheater, you see the Motown Museum, or a boardwalk, or a gathering place, just a sculpture garden or flower garden, or whatever the case may be. Or in our recreation centers too, that we receive a number of requests of creating those. And with the key things here, as they look at programming for all age, our populations, our youth, our teens, our adults, young adults, and our seniors, and those with specialized needs, is just how, again, they work collaboratively, the sustainability of funding and endowments for these particular public spaces, but overall, how they connect and bring people together. And as we look at Wayne County, as we look at attracting individuals and retaining individuals, of course, having a sustainable workforce, of having a healthy community, of having, you know, really renovated and newly infrastructure and roads. But they also look at where they can play, and parks are part of that. And that's just key important as we look at the quality of life and how we improve it for not only the resident of Wayne County, but those that may visit our system. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bradford. I think this is such an exciting time because this is a once-in-a-lifetime infusion of funds that we can do so many great works with. So I love the thing that you have here, breaking down the parks, trails, and public spaces. And again, this is going to transform how we utilize our public spaces. So thank you for that presentation. Any questions on parks and public spaces? All right, very good. Thank you so much. Next up.
Next up, we're going back to a Fadunera on workforce development.
Okay.
Thank you so much, and I have to say thank you to Commissioner Clark Coleman for teeing me up on this. So we really, we understand the importance of workforce development. And we, back in June, we've created a collaborative workforce development board. Lucy, go to the next slide, please. And out of that, we really have three large tasks that we want to fulfill. We want to invest in K-32 programming that's really seamless into the workforce. We want to upscale the current workforce and make sure that they have upward mobility within their current jobs, within the current environment that they're in, and that they're able to grow and grow their income, most importantly. And we're really looking at workforce equity and opportunity, providing continuing education and opportunity for low-income workers and ultimately providing upward mobility. We're looking at this holistically. We know that the workforce participation rate in Wayne County hovers right around the fifty-four percent, which means that there's a lot of people who can work, who are not working for whatever reason, whether they're returning citizens or whether they just don't have the resources to be able to participate in the workforce. We want to make sure that everybody is able to work and everybody has the opportunity to work. As we develop this board, really, there was a consistent message. It's that we have the tools. The tools are just not working together. So we think the So we think this is an opportunity to, for Wayne County to really, um, bring all, all the, all the stakeholders to the table and all work towards the same goal. And really, these are the, our three big, um, categories that we want to tackle. And we think we have all the right stakeholders and players at the table. Next slide, please. So our workforce development board includes, um, regional and local governments. Commission Chair Bell, um, is a part of our, our board. We've really brought together the business community, including DTE, um, Bedrock, the service providers, the people on the ground, um, assisting these folks get jobs, get trained. Um, the education, the community colleges sit on our, our board as well as foundations and the nonprofit community. We think this is a really, um, big opportunity to tackle some of these large issues that we're hearing over and over again. Um, and we know that, uh, workforce was an issue before COVID, but it's really been exacerbated by COVID, including really affecting women in the workforce. We know that women are leaving, um, at much higher rates than any other group. And that's really because of, um, the childcare, the childcare situation. So while we don't have all the programming answers yet for workforce development, we want to invest a significant amount of money to be able to tackle some of these issues. And we have all of the experts at the table to tell us how, the, the best way to tackle these big, um, workforce development issues. I know we're short on time, so I'm going to just cut it here. And, um, if there's any questions, I'll take the questions here.
Workforce development. Any questions on this presentation? Commissioner Dobbs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Wafa, so you just mentioned, um, women in the workforce and the problems with childcare and, and everything. And you know, you said you don't have all the specifics, but are there any ideas for programs or?
Yeah, we, I mean, childcare is one of the, the biggest issues. We're really waiting on the state, the state has, we, we've been talking to the state and the state is looking, um, at potentially doing, um, like childcare credits. They are, we're really. And, and fill in those gaps.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Wafa. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I was going to throw something out. Those who, uh, us who were in the old county building know that there had a daycare on site and that was very beneficial for, um, county employees and, and just other people open to the public. Um, that would be something excellent to consider. In the Guardian Building, um, just having something on site for the, um, employees who, uh, work. So they come to work there, don't have to worry about, uh, dropping off and picking up their children and having it affordable right there on site. I'm just throwing that out there.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Possibility, um, you know, that's something that we used to have over in the old county building that we're, that we don't have now. So as we talk about childcare and that being an issue for working mothers and fathers, so. All right. Any additional questions? All right, great. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Next up, we're going to ask for the assistance of Anthony Carverite with Housing.
Okay.
Thank you, Khalil. Uh, as we all know, this pandemic has adversely impacted all levels of governors and life, for that matter. Uh, and housing has not been exempt from those horrible impacts. Fortunately, we had a housing moratorium that prolonged inevitable. But unfortunately, that has since expired, leaving people out here to make some very, very tough decisions. And some of those tough decisions are regarding their homes and their overall living situations. Hey, look, we all know what's going on. Uh, we know what's needed. Uh, we know that between nineteen and twenty-three million families are at danger of losing their homes. We know that there's at least a hundred and three million dollars in unpaid rent in Wayne County alone. We know that there's seventy-five thousand eviction backlogs in Michigan, one-third of those of which are in Wayne County. We know there are these agencies, these housing agencies out here that help people have been receiving an extraordinary amount of requests for assistance right now. Uh, we know that there are major supply chain issues going on globally and the cost of materials is through the roof. Uh, and we know we've had problems with affordable housing before the pandemic, and we know those problems still exist and they need to be addressed now more than ever. And most importantly, we know, uh, we believe and we've heard you loud and clear, trust me, we have heard you loud and clear, you being the commissioners, that there's a need for housing programs in your communities. Uh, we're working to deliver those programs for you. We've identified three areas, uh, initially that can serve in helping fulfill these needs. Rental assistance, housing rehabilitation and affordable housing. Uh, to cut it short, I'm going to kick it to Colton Dale, who's going to speak with you about the impact and need for rental assistance in your communities.
Hey, everybody. Um, I am Colton Dale. I am, uh, one of the business development managers in the Economic Development Department. Um, so yes, rental, the rental assistance program, uh, otherwise known as ERAP. Uh, so because of the pandemic, we know that economic and social issues have been exacerbated, as, as has been pointed out many times, rental arrears is certainly one of those issues. Uh, so and because of issues of poverty in Wayne County, there have always been issues of people getting behind on, uh, rent and utility bills. However, there was a study done during the pandemic by National Equity Atlas, uh, that basically tells us that this issue is probably worse than it's ever been before. Uh, so there's an estimated forty-five thousand households that are behind on rent in Wayne County, leading to an estimated total rent debt of a hundred and three million dollars. This means that people in our county are at risk of housing instability, homelessness, job loss and worse, physical and mental health outcomes. Uh, because of this issue that's happening nationwide, not just in Wayne County, the American Rescue Plan, uh, allocated funds to help alleviate this issue. So Wayne County has been allocated, uh, thirty-two point six million dollars in federal funds for rental assistance. And based on federal guidance, uh, we, we believe that we need to spend nine point seven five million of that by March in order to be able to access the rest of the funding and continue this program. So, uh, this program can help renters and, and their landlords by covering up to fifteen months of rent. Uh, three months of that can be few, uh, for future rent. And it can also cover utility arrears and relocation assistance. Uh, and an important note that was brought up a little earlier, uh, today is that this program cannot, unfortunately, it cannot, um, cover residents of the city of Detroit, uh, solely because they, they, uh, got a separate allocation of rental assistance funding. Um, so after months of planning and designing this program over the summer, uh, both internally and with the help of our Guide House Consultants, uh, we launched the, the program in late September and are now accepting applications. And the last time I checked, which was, uh, pretty early this morning, we have, uh, over eight hundred or eight hundred and seventy or so applications. And we're looking to get the first assistance payments out very soon. Um, and based on the spending numbers I just mentioned, uh, we're hoping to get around six thousand applications by March. So at the current moment, uh, since we're not where we want to be with the applications, we're a little bit behind. We are shifting our focus very, very heavily towards communicating and, and, and marketing this program to Wayne County residents in need. Uh, so we're working with partner organizations uh, in the faith-based community, in the nonprofit community, um, as well as, uh, other Wayne County departments uh, to get the word out about this program as best we can. And we do have plans, uh, to also activate some other forms of media and outreach uh, in the coming weeks and, and months to make sure that we hit our goal of six thousand applications by March.
All right. Thank you, Colton. Appreciate it. I apologize. I didn't realize my camera was off a second ago. Um, but I stated earlier, this pandemic in many ways of life has caused people to have, to make some very tough decisions. And once again, like I said, the homes have not been, uh, exempt from those impacts of that decision-making. And when people have to make those tough decisions of, uh, do I pay my bills? Or do I repair my home? Most people, of course, going to choose to pay their bills and rightfully so. But unfortunately, the, unfortunately, the housing rehab projects and repairs that are needed on what's considered to be their most valuable assets, usually always take a backseat to paying those bills or purchasing the central items that they have to purchase. But if that's not properly cared for, that great asset that you have can become a huge liability. And when that happens, um, that can cause blight in our communities and quite frankly, destroy the values and equities in our communities that the people have worked so hard to build. Uh, it's commonly agreed upon that your home is twenty-five to forty percent of your net worth and we need to do something to help our citizens protect that network. Therefore, our housing rehabilitation assistance programs are most definitely needed. Uh, the land bank and the community development departments, current housing rehab programs, we've seen a huge increase in, um, uh, hundreds and hundreds of applications for this type of assistance for, uh, rehabs of our current programs. Also, some of our communities such as Rimalis, Inkster and Westland have also submitted housing rehab projects to the county. And once again, to the commissioners that have reached out to us, we, once again, we heard you loud and clear regarding those housing rehab assistance that's needed in your, your communities. Spiking these applications and requests for assistance shows a fundamental need for our current housing rehab programs to be expanded and more people, uh, expanded to have more people. And also the rehab programs must be created and implemented. So we need to definitely need some new program to assist our homes. Uh, these rehabs and investing in our communities will, you know, they were, they're cross pollinate. You know, they'll, they'll assist, uh, health and safety in our communities. They'll create some jobs. They'll help with community development and they'll build some long-term relationships and partnerships in our community. Currently at the land bank alone, we have seventy-five properties that need rehab to be livable for our citizens. And we got dozens and dozens of parcels that we can use to create affordable housing along with the community development department. And I'm going to kick it to Terry Carroll to expand on our affordable housing initiatives that, uh, we've discussed.
Well, in, in the, uh, in the interest of the, the, the hour and time running short, I'm going to keep this brief. Uh, also because, yeah, these funds that, uh, I'm talking about, the Community Development Division funds, uh, all come back to the commission, uh, uh, upon award. So you will have a future say in each one of these dollars as they go out the door. One of the things that, uh, is, is striking to us is our current, uh, rehabilitation, housing rehabilitation, uh, uh, waiting list. We are at almost a hundred applications now, which is about three times the normal size of the, uh, of, of the waiting list. So we have a hundred, uh, houses that are in need of, and I probably could term it as emergency assistance, furnaces, roofs, that kind of thing that, uh, need to be, uh, need to be addressed fairly quickly. We add this to, uh, uh, some of our existing programs. And again, all these dollars come back to the commission for award that, uh, talked about, uh, our, our, uh, home buyer assistance or our home buyer education down payment assistance program. We have a current list of sixty that has, uh, cropped up rather suddenly and usually we only do a hundred and ten a year. So, uh, basically, we're looking at, uh, putting these programs out along with, uh, some of the current allocations that we get. Uh, we have been on a parallel course with the rest of the Economic Development Department, uh, effort in notifying communities because we are, again, very regulated by HUD. Uh, we have been, uh, contacting thirty-eight Wayne County communities, sixteen Wayne County public housing authorities and nine agencies associated with homeless populations, such as those dealing with domestic violence and veterans, civil rights shelters and people with disabilities. So, um, again, we, we, we will merge these dollars, these, uh, American Rescue Plan dollars with the allocations that we get every year and try and provide affordable housing, even though costs are, have gone through the ceiling in terms of materials. We will be bringing back to the commission, uh, contracts for the provision of affordable housing in the very near future. And I believe I'm kicking back to Khalil.
Actually, it's me. Hey, thanks, Terry. I appreciate that. Um, so just to, just to bring this on home. Uh, you see certain amount of projects that have been requested, uh, through, through the, uh, through the portal. Rental assistance, we're getting rental assistance projects from everywhere. I mean, uh, like Colton said earlier, we've got, uh, seventy-five thousand in backlog of rental assistance and people need assistance to stay in their homes. No eviction moratorium. People, people need to stay in their homes. Uh, affordable housing, we have identified at the land bank, um, just for example, how you see Highland Park there. Highland Park has a thirty-four point three, uh, vacancy status and, uh, uh, forty percent below poverty status. So the land bank has already identified parcels in Highland Park that we can use to build affordable housing to make, uh, to mitigate those numbers and, and bring Highland Park back into the positive fold. Uh, housing rehab, the land bank has identified seventy-five properties. We, we noticed at housing rehab that people need homes and people need to, uh, fix up these homes. And sometime your mortgage is not enabling you to purchase the home and to fix up the home. So if we can fix up these homes and sell it to our citizens at an affordable rate, that would be great for the home rehab. And then another part of our home rehab is extending, extending our porch project to help more citizens, uh, than we do with our Mr. Funds right now. Uh, so with that being said, I'll give it back to Khalil and, uh, thank you for listening.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Cartwright. I appreciate that presentation from your team. Um, all of these are so very important, um, especially, um, for me, the domestic violence. Um, and, um, even looking at, um, our refugees and how we can assist those persons from Haiti, from Venezuela, from, uh, wherever they're coming from and assistance that we can, um, provide to them. I, uh, love the, um, home rehab because as you stated, uh, we have to make sure that our properties are in good condition to, uh, maintain our value and to decrease blight in our communities. So thank you so much for that presentation. Do you have a question from Commissioner Bedeau? Okay, Commissioner?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, during the presentation, I think it was mentioned that there are, uh, forty-five thousand, uh, rental properties that are behind, uh, rent in, in Wayne County. And only about eight hundred applications have been received, uh, from landlords. Um, uh, is there a timeline, uh, where this money has to be spent for the rental assistance or until the money runs out, Wafa?
So, um, until, we have until twenty twenty-five to spend the money, but we're hoping to spend it sooner than twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so we just need to get the message out there. You and I talked about, we're going to do a town hall meeting and, 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 and just inform the residents that this program does exist, uh, especially the landlords who may not be aware of it.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And this item will be on our agenda on Thursday at full board meeting.
Hey, how you doing? Not much else you doing, I check it.
Oh, Lord. Commissioner, Commissioner, please mute Commissioner Kenlock. Thank you. This item will be on our agenda on Thursday, um, to, to, so that they can begin, uh, giving out funds of applicants that they have already. Um, so Wafa's been working, um, and our staff has been working very diligently to, uh, make sure that this is on for Thursday so that we can start going out on those funds, those applicants. So any other, uh, questions on this presentation? Okay, Khalil, back to you.
Let me go to the next slide, please, and we are just about done. I know it's a question that I know Mark Abell has been thinking about. So I just want to present Hugh and Houston to talk a little bit about the governance structure and tracking.
Thanks, Khalil. And I'll be as quick as humanly possible. But I think, you know, while, uh, everybody's very excited about the previous slides, this is going to be very important, um, as well to really understand what we're putting in place to provide governance and controls over how we're tracking the dollars, how we're tracking the projects, um, making sure that we have a good understanding at all times of where projects are in that approval process that Khalil talked about before. And so what you see in front of you is a slide that really talks about how ideas flow through becoming approved projects. So at the very beginning, Khalil talked a little bit about all the stakeholders. So at the very beginning, Khalil talked a little bit about all the stakeholders that have been involved in generating ideas. Local members of the administration, obviously you all as members of the county commission. So those ideas go into kind of a flow here. You see that we're, we have a set of priorities that Khalil presented as well as the department head. And then we, we have a review led by our consultant, Godhouse, which really talks about, okay, for those priorities, is, I'm sorry, are those ideas aligned with our priorities? And then from there, is this idea of an eligible project or eligible potential project? It then goes through administration to really understand, okay, fine, is this a, a potential project that aligns with the needs of the county executive, members of the administration, leadership, Khalil and Janelle? And then works its way over to you all as members of commission. As Terry said before, not a dollar is spent without you all approving. And then from there, we get to tracking and, and implementation. One thing that's very important here, you know, obviously, we don't want to be, you know, the wild, wild west when it comes to spreadsheets or pieces of paper in tracking this. So God has been very instrumental in developing a tool called Airtable. We use Airtable. Some of you may, may be familiar with Airtable. The Airtable is what we use to maintain a record of everyone that was eligible or at least had applied for support with a small business grant. We use that tool very effectively. We're working to adapt that tool today, today to now instead, look at these ideas, walk, you know, monitor their flow from ideas to approved projects. And then from there, once they become live projects, we will continue to track the spend on those projects as well as the budget appropriated for the, to the lineups within those, for those projects in Airtable. MMB, management and budget, but work with Godhouse on a way to sync constantly to make sure that whatever we're tracking as current spend in these projects line up to what we have in the GL, to the general ledger and JD Edwards, which right now is our system of record. And so we're finalizing exactly how that will flow by the time the first initiative gets approved or gets loaded into the, into the system. We should have that humming, but we're finalizing exactly how this governance is going to flow between Airtable and JD Edwards. But that is the approach that we'll use to make sure that not only do we have at any point in time an understanding where every single idea is in terms of its approval status, to be able to report out on that, but also the spend associated with these, with, with these projects, with the approved projects, how they line up to our system of record for accounting purposes. I hope you'll be short and sweet. If you have any questions, raise your hand.
Thanks, Hugh. And I, I just want to say a special thank you to Lucy Mesa for teaching us how to use Airtable and making this really a, a big initiative for us to track. So good job there. Madam Chair, that, that's our last slide. Anybody can email any one of us, any questions that they have. Obviously, it's not the last time we'll be talking to you all. We are staffing up. You all will have business development managers that are assigned to you and your districts to continue ongoing conversations with projects that are in your area and your communities. You will see a lot of increase in communication that way. You can see, right? We have six categories, but you know, it's been pointed out time and time again here. Every one of these categories overlap and impact with each other. We have a range and our intention is to stick with that range as best as we can. We'll see what federal opportunities, the state opportunities present ourselves. And there ever is a change in philosophy or strategy, we'll be right back in front of you to explain it all.
All right. Thank you all so very much, Khalil, Janelle, Hughie. Thank you. That was a very thorough and thoughtful presentation. I think we hit upon the majority of the issues that are important to commissioners. You took our suggestions and to consider, and implemented those into your presentation. We appreciate that. But I'll ask to commissioners, if you didn't hear something or if you had an idea that you'd like to have explored and put into this presentation, send those to Pam and she'll comprise a list like we did last time of anything that you didn't hear, but I think it was quite thorough on and hit every point that we had talked about before. Send those to Pam, so if you do have something, if you have a direct question, any clarity, the team, on Khalil's team is there to assist. And this presentation will be available to all commissioners if you want to have it to take a deeper dive and kind of refresh. And it was a lot of information. So this presentation will be available to commissioners to have as we move forward. This was the first, actually the second of many presentations that we'll have as we move forward. Each program will come to us before any funds are given out for that particular program. So just know that, of course. And I think we did it in about almost three hours, so. I was thinking four, so you know. So any final questions, comments from commissioners before we end today? And again, we'll have ongoing conversations as we go through this because it is a lot of money. And these are transformational dollars that are really going to affect the trajectory of our county going forward. Any questions from any commissioners before we go to the next item on the agenda? Any questions? Looks like everyone has asked their question. Okay, fantastic. Thank you again, and we look forward to moving these funds forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And next item, Madam Clerk.
Item F, such other matters as may be properly submitted before the committee.
Are there any such other matters? Hearing none. Next item, public comments. Is there anyone on the phone or on Zoom who would like to address the county commission at this time? Just raise your hand if you're on Zoom. If you're on the telephone, just go ahead and shout out your question or comment. I shouldn't say question, but your comment to the commission. Anyone? Are there any emails?
No emails were received here.
One last time for public comments on Zoom or on the telephone. Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Don't move, Madam Chair. Everybody moves adjournments. Okay. Moved and supported all in favor, say aye. Aye. We'll see you all on Thursday. Thank you so much. Have a great day. Meet in adjourn. Bye. Thank you. Bye-bye.